Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Following the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Phase 3 requirements, the city council may conduct in-person meetings while continuing to provide remote access to the meetings until the Washington state restrictions are lifted. Therefore, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met and the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting will either be reconvened only virtually or be adjourned. The agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website Please note that the City Council Workshop may be accessed through GoToWebinar. The workshop is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council workshop video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with that, I will ask the clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Melney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
Mayor Martinez.
Mayor Martinez is out for the day. And with that, I will invite you all to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. And I'm trying to get my agenda up here. All right, and with that, we will go into the consent agenda. Mine's not working. I apologize, my little tablet here was not cooperating with me. So with that, we go on to item four, verbal reports from council members. Go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem. So last week, I attended a Pasco Public Facility District Meeting with my fellow Councilwoman Milne. And what that was is that was really fleshing out the financial analysis of the potential project that the PFD is evaluating. So the numbers look good, in fact, way better than expected. And so there's a possibility that the facility that's been being discussed could actually be increased in size and in scope. So that remains to be determined, but the Pasco PFD has proven hot and heavy, so we can hopefully potentially propose a ballot measure this November or possibly early next year. That decision's still to be determined, but they're really honing in on the elements of the project. So really looking forward to that, getting in front of the people and having the voters of Pasco be able to choose whether or not they want to, you know, support a water park. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you for sharing that. Anyone else? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Yes, we had a presentation at Ben Franklin Transit for one of our committees, our subcommittees, and just wanted to say thank you from Ben Franklin Transit for the support of the request that they're asking for earmarked dollars from the federal government to be able to add to their budget some improvements in our, some facilities in Pasco, both in East and West Pasco. So just excited to see if that money comes through and we'll have some improvements in our transportation here in Pasco.
Perfect, thank you for sharing that. Anyone else? Thank you, thank you for sharing. And we will go down to item number five, items for discussion. And we have item A, the 2021-2022 Biennial Financial Update. Director Sigdahl.
Hello.
How are you?
Great, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Evening, Madam Mayor Protem and councilmembers. The document in front of you, I apologize for a wall of numbers, usually not the way that I like to present reports, but especially given with COVID and the impacts, I wanted to show a status of all of our funds. And this was the best way that I could think of doing it. We can definitely change it if this is not quite what you desire. What you have in front of you is essentially all of city's funds. And to make things a little bit more clearer, we also split it between operational and capital expenses as well, so that you can kind of see the trend of operational cost is very much in line of, we have spent three months out of the 24 months of the biennium, and hence that should be pretty much the 12% that you should be anticipating. Whereas the capital expenses don't always follow that trend, because they're very much reliant on the project schedules and when you combine them together, they tend to skew the data a little bit for the operational expenses. At this point, we do not really clearly have a trend of where we will end the biennium of 2021 and 2022, because it's just too early in that period. Some of the things that are pretty clear is that our sales is still really strong, which is great news, and we hope that it continues. Our permitting is very strong. And with permitting and construction comes the construction sales tax, which is definitely kind of those two parts there, and as well as the growing economic activity around Pasco. Overall, we are still seeing some, it's been kind of a standard thing since last year, but there are delinquencies in our utility funds. However, they are low enough that you will not really see a huge impact there. And of course, some of the tourism-related and gaming taxes are still very low or fairly low compared to pre-2020. So we're looking for those revenue sources to come back and also looking into the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Funds. Today has been quite a busy day. We got 155-page-long details, which is exactly what we've been looking for. And there were some briefings from the Treasury into the details of it, just from what we've looked at so far. It looks to be very much like the CARES funding, but a little bit more open and more flexible. So we're going to look through that, see exactly what kind of programs we can create within those criterias and come back to council here soon. And those are all of the things that I have to report at this time, unless of course you have any questions for me.
It looks like we don't have any questions. Director Sigdahl.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report.
I did forget one key piece that I would like to add. So far, I believe we have reported to council that we are anticipating about $18.4 million in ARPA funding. That was an estimated calculation from the Treasury. Today, what we received was a final guidance, and that is actually about $1 million less at $17.4 million. I did speak to some of my counterparts across the river, and they're also seeing a similar decrease. So we're looking into why that happened, if we're able to.
Thank you, Director. And you said $18.4 million, is that correct?
We were anticipating $18.4, however, the final number is $17.4.
$17.4, thank you. And no comments from our council members, so we will move on to item B. And we have ordinance, PMC Amendment, Street Connectivity. And we have Director White for this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to turn it over, actually, this item and the next two items, so the next three agenda items will all be presented by Jacob Gonzalez, our senior planner here at the City of Pasco. I'm going to turn it over to him. They all involve regulations that would assist with meeting some of council goals and assist with providing more housing traces. So I'm going to turn it over to the very capable hands of Mr. Gonzalez, who's been working on all three of these for at least the last year and a half.
Sounds good, thank you. Welcome, Jacob, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Barajas and members of council. Excited to be here tonight before you to present some very exciting items and proposals before you. This item in particular, Street Connectivity, has some significant impacts and a lot of research went into this process and into this effort. In fact, there were six public hearings, eight meetings at the Pasco Planning Commission meeting. So obviously, a long effort and excited to present that tonight. And Street Connectivity can be somewhat hard to define, but also very limited to define. But it turns out that the layout of a city, the pattern of a city, actually derives from Title 21 of the Pasco Municipal Code. That's the layout of our lots and blocks. And so so much of what our cities look like, particularly the City of Pasco, is derived out of that particular title. I'm not biased, but that is my favorite portion of the code. And as we look forward to aligning and updating our municipal code to comply with the goals and policies set forth by council, it's also, I think from a staff perspective, important to note that we can't require what isn't required. And so in the development review process, when we share council goals or specific policy, whether it's in the Comprehensive Plan or the Bike Ped Pedestrian Master Plan or the Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Act, or whatever it may be, unless it's codified in our municipal code, we have to go by what's actually in the PMC. That's our hearing examiner determines whether an application is approved or not. So with that said, I thought it'd be important to just go briefly through some of the council goals tonight and obviously the purpose. So we've got a layout dating back to 2010 that's indicated that transportation's important to city council here. The 2011 Bike Ped Master Plan, the Complete Streets Policy of 2018, the 2018 Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Policy. And as of late October 2020, the updated council goals for 2020 and 2021, and the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. Also want to mention that a lot of this was derived very early in the Transportation System Master Planning Process that we're looking to wrap up this summer. So the council goals had a variety of overarching themes, quality of life, financial sustainability, et cetera, community transportation network. We believe this particular proposal addresses each one of these. In particular, the, let's see here, the Community Transportation Network piece, which is to promote a highly functional multimodal transportation system through collaboration with Ben Franklin Transit. And our Comprehensive Plan further refines that by collaboration with local government entities and transportation-related fields. And the utilization of developments and policies, regulations, et cetera, that provide for greater connectivity, strategic investment, mobility, accessibility, efficiency, and safety in the transportation planning process. I also wanted to identify community identity, particularly as it relates to community input and community surveys. That's been a significant part not only of the Comprehensive Plan and of this particular effort, but has been pretty successful so far within Transportation System Master Plan. Our first outreach had over 600 comments. We've got another outreach currently open for public right now. To the Comprehensive Plan, there's numerous goals and policies that I think we're all familiar with, but wanted to focus again on land use policy that encourages the orderly development of land. Again, that's referring back to Title 21. Economic Development Policy, which includes recognizing that transportation utility planning is vital to economic development in the city. Obviously, Transportation Policy 1F, development of an interconnected network of streets, trails, and other public ways in development process while preserving neighborhood identity. And again, a really difficult one, though, is the implementation piece. How do we actually take these goals and policies and turn them from something on the shelf to something that actually we see on a daily basis here in the City of Pasco? So what is Street Connectivity? I think an easy way to sum it up is the degree in which the transportation system provides access to the destinations we need to reach on a daily basis. That's schools, parks, hospitals, home, grocery store, et cetera. And the three components of that, access, connectivity, and mobility. The quality of travel, is there a direct route? And is it ease of travel? Is it able for anybody from any mode, at any age, or income, able to travel and access throughout our network here in the City of Pasco? The United States Department of Transportation defines strategies at short block lengths, intersection density, multimodal prioritization, safe and visible bicycle pedestrian facilities, and a streets policy. We definitely have the last one and the other four we're working on. So connectivity benefits, they're wide and they vary. Obviously, they distribute traffic with a more direct and efficient process. The orderly development of utilities, our sewer or water, they follow the layout of our streets. Community access, safety, the environmental impacts, equity, and costs. On the top graphic, you'll see what we see quite a bit in the planning circles, which is how our neighborhoods and cities have changed from the traditional grid pattern and more into a, I'm sorry, a curved linear process. And you can see how that plays out in the City Pasco Center lines on the bottom graphic, although that's here. So you remember this from the March presentation from DKS, our consultant for the master plan. And these are existing conditions, system constraints in the City of Pasco. And it's easy to sum this one up. In central Pasco, it's well-connected, it's supportive of the multimodal transportation system. And often overlooked, it actually perfectly puts in place the functional classification system that's required by us of the Federal Highway Administration. And the area identified under 2, that's kind of the River View, West Pasco, Donut Hole area, you have a combination of both characteristics, because the old rural community there actually was laid out on a grid pattern. It was for irrigation easements, but we've now placed roads on them. But over time, some of the plating practices have made some of the connections harder to come by. And in the area north of 182, we have limited access, disconnected multimodal options, very long blocks. Looking at safety and congestion, kind of a busy map here, so I'll try to sum this up. Safety issues were identified in the master plan so far on Burden, Sylvester, Court, and Lewis. Congestion issues on Road 68, Burden, US 395, at Sylvester and Lewis Streets. So intersection density, the amount of nodes intersections within a given area. So for this particular map, we're looking at square miles. These aren't broken up by census block or census tract. I try to delineate them by areas I think we can generally high overview of the City of Pasco. So that top number in black is the number of nodes per square mile, intersections. However, not all intersections are the same, dead ends, cul-de-sacs, there are limited access. So that number you see in red is the number of cul-de-sacs and dead ends per square mile. And you start to see a pattern develop if we look at the prior map with the safety congestion constraints and the map before that that identified the, the map that showcased where connectivity is in place and where it's not, we're starting to see a pattern develop here. Central Pasco, high intersection density, high intersection density, a smaller cul-de-sac dead end per square mile. And you see that increase as you shift north and west. Looking at the block perimeter at the block level, the darker the blue, the smaller the length around a block. The orange and red is the longer length around the block. And again, you can see in central Pasco, shorter block perimeters. And as you go north and west, increased block perimeter distances. And east of Oregon Avenue, we actually have kind of a combination of both development patterns, a grid pattern and also kind of this newer disconnected pattern taking place as well. Those dots you see on the screen are the dead end and cul-de-sac nodes in the City of Pasco. The map on the left is an intersection density map at the parcel level. So the darker the blue, again, the more intersections that take place per given area. And on the right, we actually correlate that with the amount of households that you can reach within a 15-minute walk. So a lot of this has to do with land use, zoning, et cetera, and also where high density is located and lower density is located. So some of this is easy to understand why it turned out this way, but I also wanted to point out the varieties in which block perimeter can impact access here in the City of Pasco. Wanted to showcase this graph that shows walk scores. These are the Pasco schools, I think as of 2019. And 55% of our students attend schools that have a walk score below 25 in the Pasco School District. 66% attend schools below a walk score of 50 in the Pasco School District. Now, walk score is a metric used more for real estate. However, it's an important metric, because it measures not only access and connectivity, but also the goods and services that are provided versus vehicle versus not needing a vehicle to accomplish these tasks. The majority of schools in the Pasco School District fall well below 50, a 50-walk score. Comparing regulations in Pasco, so on the left, you see a variety of cities slightly bigger than us, slightly smaller than us, and this is where we compare the actual regulations and their versions of Title 21 for the block length. Pasco, the maximum block length is 1,320 feet. So in Pasco, a block can be 1,020 feet long, 320 feet long. That's slightly shorter than what takes place in Richland and West Richland, the same as Wenatchee, but significantly higher than what we see in other cities, smaller and bigger than ours, such as Yakima, Vancouver, Ellensburg, Walla Walla, and Olympia. And on the right, we see average block perimeter. Most jurisdictions do not have a regulation for block perimeter, but the data is available to us from the Center of Neighborhood Technologies. And again, we throw Pasco again with the same cities. Pasco again has a much larger block perimeter than some of the other jurisdictions. So how does that compare when we look at the 20 largest cities in the state of Washington? This is based on the 2019 estimates, we're roughly around 78,000 or 79,000 as of this April. So in Pasco, we're right in the middle of that 20 in terms of the percent of income necessary or allocated for housing and transportation, 47%. When we look at just transportation, which is the second highest household cost outside of the house itself, 24% of the income is allocated for transportation. That's third highest in the state of Washington. Vehicle miles traveled per household, number two. $3,700, number two is the annual VMT cost, vehicle mile travel cost in the household for the City of Pasco. On the environmental side, greenhouse gas emissions, we are again our number two in the state of Washington, at least with the top 20 cities here in the state. Transportation is the biggest producer of emissions. So this is what that looks like mapped out. On the left, the vehicle miles traveled per household, the darker the red, the more VMT. Again, you see a pattern. Definitely makes sense to see that along some of the areas along the river, more spatially segregated. And on the right, we see the transportation cost per household. And again, you can see central Pasco and even parts of northwest Pasco, along 182 Chapel Hill, Road 100, see slightly less household cost for transportation. But again, a lot of orange, a lot of red. So a street pattern. This is what exists in a lot of neighborhood development over the past decades or so here in the City of Pasco. That on the top left is Sanford Parkway, just east of Road 68, I'm sorry, west of Road 68. We have 3,800 feet between intersecting blocks. And the image to the right shows you the route you would have to take to get between Road 100 or Broadmoor Boulevard and Road 68. And while we could also use Burns Road or Sanford Parkway, those two roads are increasingly becoming congested. We've got two new schools on Burns Road. And so if you were looking to take a slightly different route but still get you to the same place, that's the route you would have to take place. That's the route you would have to do. On the bottom right, you can see just south of Sanford Parkway. We almost get the pattern correct, yet we got bits and pieces missing. Keep in mind, on the west of Road 76, we have the Pasco Public Library, a lot of grocery stores, health facilities, et cetera. On the left, you see this north of A Street, where again, you see the combination of both the prior plating practices with the smaller grid, with the grid pattern blended with the disconnected pattern as well. Compare that to central Pasco, obviously a much more, from a transportation planning view, much more supportive of multimodal transportation, much more direct access. This, I would ask the fire department for input on this one, but I believe this would be a lot easier to serve from a fire department perspective or a police department perspective, or for walking or biking versus what we saw on the prior slide. Predictable development pattern, more travel options, easier facilitation for transit multimodal options, and emergency response. So policy recommendations that staff believes best addresses council goals and best practices. We've worked with our transportation consultant to develop these and also throughout the public process that took place at the Pasco Planning Commission meetings. So staff is proposing an enhancement on some of these that already exist in the code, but they lack substance or they're very broad in nature and again, are difficult to require when there's not a specific number or they're not identified in more detail. So we are proposing to do that with this particular amendment, which is adding a provision for connectivity to a body lands. The street system of a proposed subdivision shall be designed to connect to existing proposed or planned streets. So if a street is already going north and south, we would expect that that street continue going north and south unless there was justification for it not to. A future street plan that indicates that a proposal will not prohibit that from occurring, we will not require a development to build a street on another parcel that does not belong to them or is not part of their process, but we want to make sure that it will not prohibit the street from going further. Cul-de-sacs, we actually didn't change much on this, but we added a provision. Right now, the current PMC requirement is for 400 feet, but we allow them up to 600 feet. We just kept it at 600 feet, there was no need to change that. However, we added clarity to when a cul-de-sac would be appropriate and when it would not be appropriate, and what happens when one is in place. So if there is a cul-de-sac and it's within a quarter mile of a public land use, such as a hospital, a school, or a park, staff is recommending that we add a provision that a 12-foot pathway, which is in our design and construction standards from Public Works, be added to the code. We also revise the intersection spacing or offset intersections in the municipal code. Right now, there's a minimum of 125 feet, which might make sense in a rural setting or on slow-speed arterials or collector roadways. But in a growing urbanizing area, it became a safety issue. So rather than make up our own, we decided to use the guidelines from the ASHTO experts, the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials. Again, getting back to pedestrian and bicycle accessways, this actually is already a component of Title 21. We just further clarified that, adding the provision that connects with the cul-de-sac placement. And these are the actual block length and block perimeter examples, I'm sorry, not examples, but recommendations staff is making for council this evening. So we are proposing that the maximum block length be reduced to 660 feet with a maximum block perimeter of 1,880 feet. Cul-de-sac length remains the same. We've left that block length the same for light and medium commercial, but increased the block perimeter distance. And in the River View, West Pasco area, which we'll show on the following slide, we've only decreased it to 1,000. And the reality is that it And the reality is that it is it is impractical to apply these these standards in an area that has a a combination of plating practices. And in reality, roads that end in backyards, front doors, back doors, sheds, et cetera. In fact, uh we are re- uh interviewing firms for the Road Sixty-Eight and Court Street improvements today. And one of the constraints that each firm identified, that at Road Sixty-Eight and Court Street, south of that area, which is I I think in anticipating one thousand trips per day. Part of the construction problems will be that there's no other access to Court Street outside of Road Sixty-Eight. So that will be a problem for us for that particular project. You see the intersection distance table provided by Ashdo. That was re- that was asked to be included uh from the developer community back in September of twenty twenty. And we've also made exceptions for multifamily units, government, public, civic uses, parks, schools, et cetera, hospitals. And then the cul-de-sac pathways required when uh they are within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of a public land use or facility. So a public transportation route, a school, a park, et cetera. This is the area that staff is defining as the Riverview West Pasco area, so everything south of one eighty-two, west of three ninety-five, down by the Columbia River. Uh the code provisions are limited due to the plating patterns and constraints, block length increased um from six hundred and sixty to one thousand feet. I wanted to provide some input um from a variety of stakeholders here. This is the Benton Franklin Council of Governments back in the fall. Their technical advisory committee, they are revising the uh Metropolitan Regional Transportation Plan. So they're going kind of through their their higher level review of what to include and kind of the goals and policies of that particular effort. Um and they've indicated that funding, preservation, and maintenance are challenges. And that they've also uh in this, this is the Public Works Directors for the jurisdictions here in the in the two-county region. That increased walkability and bikeability or supportive of active transportation uh have the highest uh demands for the region. This is from the twenty eighteen uh National Citizen Survey. The the comments we receive on a variety of our surveys are uh very diverse. And in this particular one, uh there seems to be favor for path and walking trails. Uh what exists here in the city of Pasco and also over fifty percent on the walking, ease, and bike travel. There is uh work to do on the built environment and on land use planning overall. This is from the Transportation System Master Plan. This is the uh community survey last spring with over six hundred uh comments. And on the left, you see uh how the public uh voted on if they can easily walk to most destinations in their neighborhoods. So on the top, you have those that say they agree, and on the bottom, those that say they disagree. So kind of a an equal spread. Um and on the right, you see crosswalks are provided whenever I want to cross the street. Little bit of a spread, but you certainly see more uh distribution towards the bottom part that they disagree, that that's not uh that's not provided for them. This is what that looks like on a map. On the left, sorry for not labeling these, but on the left, the pink represents the sidewalk constraints. And a lot of this has to do obviously with who's who's providing input, who has access to the survey information, et cetera. But obviously, you see patterns along Road Sixty-Eight, Burden, Argent, Road One Hundred for sidewalk access. And on the right is the purple, which is the bike pedestrian constraints. Similar pattern as well, uh Road Sixty-Eight, Sanford and Burden Boulevard as well. Also wanted to provide a a a higher level perspective of the benefits of walkability for communities in the United States. Uh seventy-six percent indicate walkability as a deciding factor of where they want to live today. That's from the National Association of Realtors, a survey in twenty seventeen. Eighty percent said walkable communities are an important uh attribute for quality of life. That's from that same survey. The Urban Land Institute indicate uh reported at sixty-three sixty-three percent prefer to live in a place where they do not have to use a car very often. And on the right, that's from the chief economist of the National Association of Realtors, that states walkable communities attract tourists, reduce commuting costs and emissions. And facilitate good health, bringing in more value to a neighborhood. I think uh this effort, um this slide is one of my favorite because I think it showcases the the collaboration that took place between. A variety of government, local government agencies in our region and at the state level. On the transportation side, Wash Dot, the Benton Franklin Council of Governments are two of our biggest, if not the biggest, funding mechanisms for transportation projects here in the city of Pasco. Uh the Ben Franklin Transit Agency also provided a letter of support for us at the Planning Commission. They also provided verbal support. If it's difficult uh for uh public transportation to take place, obviously, that's a concern for them. Uh visit tri-cities and bike tri-cities recognize the importance of walkability for tourism and economic development. You see Sustainable Tri-Cities, a local advocacy group for sustainable practices and smart growth planning. And the city of Pasco Fire Department, which provided a letter of support to the Planning Commission indicating that response times can be impacted by disconnected streets. Also, uh want to identify that that staff believes we've addressed the concerns we received. Uh we we we're not naive to this particular amendment. We understand that it has significant impacts. There will be the cost, the increased regulations, and even confusion about why. Uh we had two meetings exclusively with the uh Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities back in September and October. And uh I'm sure I didn't do uh those two meetings justice with the three bullet points today uh there on the screen. But I believe they summed them up correctly, which is the lack of outreach, the urgency, why is staff moving forward with this? Why are we moving forward with this so quickly? Where's the need for it? And also the increased cost, not only for the development side, but obviously what will be passed down to the homeowner or the renter. Uh we also met virtually with the Tri-City Association of Realtors uh in November of last year as well. I wanted to show sort of the uh the phasing or how this took place. Uh apologize for kind of the busy table here, but on the two left columns, you see the item, the particular regulation and where it lives in the code, whether it does or doesn't today. That third uh column was the recommendation from the Transportation System Master Plan. We provided four recommendations to the Pasco Planning Commission uh back in the spring of twenty twenty. Each was slightly varying uh varying distances and parameters. At the end of it, uh Planning Commission voted on a combination of of the two really. Um although the block length remained a constant, um a constant, uh it remained constant throughout the process, which was six hundred and sixty feet. However, in that Riverview West Pasco area, Planning Commission uh thought that one thousand feet would be more practical. The residential and commercial block perimeters were increased. And uh you can see the description of which each of those, very short description of what that actually means. On the right, you see the proposal that was provided to the planning staff in, I'm sorry, September of twenty twenty. Uh I I realize that our recommendation does not align with the proposal uh provided by the Home Builder Association, the Tri-Cities. However, uh staff uh's goal here is to meet council goals and policies and align them with best practices. So that's why there's a difference in the two proposals tonight, or at least in the proposal that we provided versus the one that's been um recommended as well. The uh obviously, understanding the the impact of an amendment like this or proposal like this, the key things of access, collaboration, efficiency. Multimodal transportation and safety, uh balancing the benefits of the proposal with the uh with the impacts of that. We understand that this will limit the amount of lots that will be uh allowed. You're gonna increase the right-of-way, so you're gonna lose land to uh to the right-of-way, more road, less lots. However, we don't regulate density and lot sizes in Title Twenty-One. We do that in Title Twenty-Five, and that's actually the the subject of the next item on tonight's council agenda. Title Twenty-One again refers to the layout of the city, how we do our subdivisions, not the density, the lot size minimums, the heights, et cetera. We've been asked where the six hundred and sixty-foot block length comes from, and it turns out it it's pretty old. It comes from the public uh the public land survey system. It's actually considered one of the uh most important zoning uh policies that in the United States of America. Because it set the standard for how we do the grid pattern across the United States. And on the right, you see a uh a model at the census tract level of the connectivity of each census tract in the United States of America. So it's, this isn't a proposal that's new. It's not a proposal that would be new to Pasco. In fact, prior to probably the mid-seventies. Our block length maximum was four hundred and forty feet. I wanted to finish this again with, you see the three documents or the three images to the right. Uh that's a West Pasco Traffic Analysis Study uh from the early nineties, and you see a City Pasco One Eighty-Two update. Again, from the early two thousands, both of those documents, planning studies, engineering documents, had indicated the importance of connectivity in the city of Pasco. Because at that time, we recognized how fast the community was growing. You can see the uh the marker delineations of what that would look like in Northwest Pasco. And unfortunately, some of these, we, they're no longer possible. On the left, I spoke about my favorite part of Title Twenty-One, and it's the purpose. Uh the purpose, uh the uh subdivision of land width in the Pasco urban area. Is to promote the health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare of welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the Pasco urban area. And so I think that this proposal addresses not only this purpose, but also the input we've received from the community. I think as shown uh through the comments received, um and uh obviously, the letters of support received from transportation experts across the region and the state. Happy to answer any questions and appreciate council's time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions from council? Comments? Looks like there's no comments. Oh, sorry.
Over there, and there, so take your position.
Councilmember Serrano, go ahead first.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, thanks for your time. I appreciate, it's obvious that a lot has gone into this. And um I appreciate the information on the outreach that was done, cause I mean, it may not surprise you. I'm friends with a handful of folks that are in the Home Builders Association. Uh so you know, I get a different story of this picture. And and you know, what I'm trying to do here is relay the message that I'm hearing and trying to marry up the two so I can understand what's going on. Um you know, obviously, the first thing I heard was was limited outreach. Uh I see that, you know, in the past year and a half, there have been at least eight public meetings, so I appreciate that information coming to attention. Um I think, uh you know, we did receive collectively a letter from Mr. Loce of the Home Builders Association. Uh his primary concern obviously was the block length, right? Moving from six sixty to thirteen twenty. Um now, that's an eighth versus a quarter mile, right? Um I mean, I guess my question is, what's? The basis we're looking at for that is is more pedestrian accessibility. And and you you kind of have said it as well, what we're weighing that against is density. And I recognize that's not regulated in this section of the the code, but you know, as you put in more street, more curb gutter and sidewalk. You have additional runoff that you have to account for. You lose that ability. Um is there a risk that by, you know, taking it and cutting in half the max length, that we are really going to lose out on density options? If we don't have more um, you know, multifamily housing unit options? I mean, it it that just seems naturally that we're gonna take away from opportunity to to have a more dense, if we're gonna have single-family homes. Is is that correct?
With regards to the multifamily options, um and this will be in the next um presentation, eighty-four percent of residential zone land in the city of Pasco does not allow multifamily units. So we'll try to address that in the next item. With regards to who this particular recommendation is for. While it certainly will provide benefits to non-motorized users, bicycles, uh walkers, scooters, et cetera. Um it really will provide a benefit to those traveling by by vehicle. I realize we want to stay competitive with the the private uh developers in the region because they provide a lot of the housing that we need so severely. There's a portable housing crisis that's here home. So again, we don't take this amendment lightly, and we want to remain competitive. But I I travel Sanford Parkway every single day. I travel Burden Boulevard quite frequently. There is a competition every single day on Road Sixty, Madison, Road Ninety, and Road Seventy-Six for a left turn onto any of those major roadways. And so while certainly there will be improvements and benefits to the the non-motorized users in Pasco, this will really impact. And unfortunately, not in the area that's already developed. This is gonna be more in the urban growth area. Uh but it'll be to their benefit. It'll also serve to the benefit of uh first responders as well. I I wanna I wanted to highlight that because it's often overlooked that the pattern of a city, if it's disconnected. And for those that use it on a daily basis to provide us with emergency services, it'll also uh impact them as well.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you kind of calling out geographic disparities or differences. Ha- has the staff considered, you know, um geographic limitations? You know, I mean, obviously, you've got the Riverview that's at a hun- at a thousand versus the six sixty. But but were there more considerations given to, you know, urban infill versus building new?
Uh that's a great question, and I think some that staff tried to weigh is is doesn't make sense to do that from a from a planning perspective. Uh however, you know, having gone just through the urban growth area expansion process, realizing that everything within that area is urban. And it should be urban for the next twenty years. We're required to accommodate, uh you know, our population growth by the State Growth Management Act. Um so while uh there certainly might uh uh might be indicators that it works better in some areas and other. The re- the the best practice is say the smaller the block length increases multimodal transportation uh facilitation in the city. It also, I think, again overlooked, actually implements the functional classification system in Northwest Pasco. We have very few arterials, many local access road, no collector facilities. Even though we may draw them on our map, they don't really act as collector facilities because they weren't designed that way. They were ju- they're just busy local access roads. And the parts of connectivity, I think, not only was uh, you know, reaffirmed during the interview process today with firms on Road Sixty-Eight and Court Street. But we had the groundbreaking on Wrigley that I think demonstrated how important connectivity is to busy arterials from our residential areas. To the places that they want or need to get to on a daily basis.
Okay, and that kind of segues into my, I've got a handful of other questions, but I see se- there were several lights on. Um the other question I have is is that of connectivity, you know, limiting cul-de-sacs. While I recognize the value of, you know, projecting future growth needs. Um is there any risk associated with kind of forcing the developer into either uh bringing the street through? And and projecting future growth? I mean, you know, I'll be honest, I received an email from from one in the development community that has a CIPA appeal. That addresses that very issue, right? You know, by essentially constituting a taking or a government uh taking certain land by disallowing development. Uh do we run risk of that type of issue? You know, I'd I'd hate to see us try to provide connectivity through punch-through streets, if you will. Um but then, you know, how will developers sue us for a takings issue?
Right, um and that was brought to our attention, and it's not the intent of staff either to put the city at risk. Um uh this did go through an extensive extensive legal review, not only by our local uh office. But also by the Municipal Research Service Agency that's provided for cities across the state of Washington. There's also a pretty, you know, the takings and the proportional nexus, et cetera. Those are pretty uh uh well-known within the subdivision regulations. So we made sure to clearly state how that would be uh implemented in the minus- in the priv- in the recommendation provided by staff.
And Mr. Gonzalez, if I may, I have a comment on that for uh Councilmember Serrano as well. Uh Councilmember Serrano, uh and and for record, this is Attorney Jeff Brace with the Curran Law Group. I would direct your attention to section twenty-one fifteen zero one zero. Uh sub-paragraph three D, and and you'll find in that section, uh Councilmember Serrano. Uh the the legal requirements to help avoid a taking where any streets that are connecting to adjacent developments would need to. Um there would need to be some foreseeable adjacent development in in order to stub those streets all the way out.
Okay, I appreciate that, and that was uh three Charlie, correct?
Uh three Delta.
Oh, three Delta, okay, thank you.
Oh, no, no, uh sorry, it's just the entire sub-paragraph three. Yes, yeah, yeah, and you're right. Ch- Charlie, that's part of the um holding on the case law relative to takings when you're uh talking about. Um you know, the Nolan Dolan standard with respect to street steps.
Okay, I don't want to hijack the meeting, getting into Larnard tough. I, no, I appreciate that because I, you know, I was looking at that and kind of seemed to scratch the the itch, but I was just curious. Uh so I appreciate that. Like I said, I've probably got a handful more questions, but I saw lights on.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Um Councilmember Maloney, you have some questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Potem, and thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for the for the thorough um introduction and review. Um just as a as an overall structural uh comment is, um I would have loved to have that packet uh before the meeting. Um I think that that packed the information really well. Um it made it very digestible. I I really can't see some of the details from here. So I was I was kind of struggling to be able to to follow along with what you're saying and what was on the screen. I I really can't see some of the details from here, so I was, I was kinda struggling to be able to to follow along with what you're saying and what was on the screen. So in the future, if it's all possible, even if it's just an hour or two before the meeting, I'd really appreciate uh, um, the slides, even if there's a, even if a draft version. Um. So I I have some, some questions, I have some comments and I have some concerns. So I'll, I'll kinda throw some of that there and and Mr. Serrano, thank you for covering some of those very uh, um. Comments and concerns that I had, so I appreciate that. So um. So one of the things that I get a comment on, so so I of course live not too far from here, a short walk from here and I and. Um, as a preface, I really like where I live. I like how how sh- how short the blocks are. I like to be able to walk to my grocery store. I like to be able to walk to my favorite restaurant. Um, I like to be able to walk to City Hall and to downtown. I I really, so so obviously I've chosen to to live in a place that has the sort of environment I think that this connectivity is is proposing. Um, so a a a question is. I I don't have six hundred and sixty feet well formed in my head. So say the neighborhoods around, say, Pasco High School. Um, I think you had a chart, I think you had a map up earlier, uh, sho- showing that as a kind of one of the example points. Approximately, how do those blocks compare to this um, this proposed regulation? If you don't mind backing up to that slide, maybe maybe plenty of helping, helping put this into some um, better perspective for me.
I will try to navigate, um. Communications Director John Farfar might need to provide some help with me on the keyboard here. Doesn't seem to be going back. Um. There you go. Uh, a few more slides, I believe.
Should you go back to four, two slides? We had kind of a, a view of the of Pasco High School.
Okay, that's uh. Further the, the other direction then. In in general, some of those blocks, now that's block perimeter, so that's length around the uh, the entire block, although these are actually the the center lines. Um, and a and a satellite imagery.
There we go. So yeah, so if you can just give me some perspective based on 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 this area here. Um, of of what that would, of what this would kind of look like, could you help me?
This would be larger. Uh, at most of Central Pasco was developed underneath five hundred feet block lengths. In fact, Central Pasco, I think, was at four hundred. Um, and up until the mid-seventies, when subdivision regulations were changed across the country. Most cities actually had this particular standard because it was based off that survey system. Um. Six hundred and sixty feet, uh, right, uh, four hundred and five feet to Centerfield at T-Mobile Park in Seattle. Um, it it's not short, but it's not extremely long either. I I think it's right in the middle and and again, it it was kind of a blend of best practices, recommendations and what. We believe would be correct as the city continues, you know, basically doubling size over the next twenty to thirty years. So these blocks are shorter, but they also have alleys and most traditional developments had alleys. Um, and so that's where you see the block perimeter standard come into play. We don't, I I guess perceive to, we still allow alleys, but we don't see them. Uh, as much these days, but they're still allowed. And um, I think we would encourage them to be used when they're appropriate, specifically along some of our higher arterials, higher speed arterials. But that block perimeter standard takes into account your two tiers of lots. Your, and the right-of-way dedication necessary for a collector arterial roadway, so thirty to forty-five feet. Plus the lot in-depth width of any particular lot, um, kind of as an average through our zoning district. So there was a lot of, um, I didn't have it for this presentation, but when we presented that particular component to the planning commission, we showed what that actually looked like. At least as a, as a um, as a illustrative uh graphic.
I think, I appreciate that.
If I could jump in, just to give you a couple of examples, I was fooling around on the map here. So from the front door of City Hall to the courthouse is thirteen hundred and twenty feet. From the front door of City Hall down to Clark Street is thirteen hundred and twenty feet. A block width out that way, just past uh Sylvester Park is six hundred and sixty feet. Or a block length, I should say.
Great, appreciate that. The, I I thank you for uh, for going through a specific example to help me understand um, what that looks like. Cause I, I think that's, that's really key is is how does this feel? We in Pasco have um, pretty extreme examples. Uh, across the city, so being able to put that in perspective of of who we already are, I think uh, it really helps me understand it, so I appreciate that. Um. So. One of the, one of the complaints I hear in my district a lot is that the grid, the grid pattern allows people to go very fast down the streets. Uh, even when they're, we don't have very wide uh, streets right next to us. And so the grid pattern unfortunately also creates a situation wherein people can go pretty fast. Um, and there's a lot of issues with um, stop signs and and, you know, compliance with 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 all the stop signs and such. Um, would this potentially create those sort of safety hazards in in the new developments over in the, say, the Broadmoor area where this would be probably most applicable?
I certainly can't predict the uh. Travel behavior uh, by members of the community. However, overall, uh, this proposal, short block links, basically increasing mobility options in the community. Is seen as a safety benefit because it allows, while you may have more nodes, more intersections, more intersections and possible locations for for conflict. They're also at much lower speeds because those are happening on local access roads. Whereas right now, we have very few limited local access roads that uh. Uh, that have access to our major arterials such as, well, Road ninety, Road seventy-six, where the fire station's at. That's a great location for a fire station. Um, and the same thing on Burden Boulevard, we have Murdison, I'm sorry, uh, Road sixty. And Madison that lead into uh, into those arterials. So I certainly again can't can't answer what the travel behavior would be. But the overall consensus is that this is a benefit, a net benefit for safety. For all modes and all users of a transportation system. Also, the transportation system master plan is taken into account, uh, traffic calming measures. A lot of cities that do have patterns like this have, uh, they can be bull bouts, chicanes, uh, even many roundabouts at certain locations. Just to slow the speed down. Obviously, we wanna make sure that's coordinated with our fire and police departments, cause we don't wanna prohibit them. Uh, but the uh, there's certainly no, um. There's no evidence that supports mobility increases, increases safety concerns. We didn't, we didn't come across any of those and I I think that was evident as well through the letters of support we see from Wash Dot and then Franklin Transit as well.
Appreciate that. Um, I'll ask one last question, I'll, I'll leave you some comments. Um, so my understanding, so when we're talking about, um, gosh, what, a year or two ago, we were talking about planned unit developments. And um, in creating additional structures that would allow creativity and flexibility in designs of of neighborhoods and developments. To create something that's not, that you can have a community that is kind of, you know, different and has its own unique character. That was kind of my understanding. And as part of that, I I I thought I understood that the idea of of more meandering type roads and s- and. And pathways and such was was encouraged as part of that. But a grid-like pattern would would go the other direction. So could you, can you talk to me about how those things interact both? You know, local, you know, development and neighborhood, um, identity and character, um, eh, as compared to a, a more grid-like system? Like, how does, how do those things fit together? Can you help me understand that?
Certainly, so the uh, the planned unit development ordinance was written, um, obviously with increased flexibility in mind. That's in, that's its purpose. But in that ordinance itself, we actually included as well that uh, while private streets are permitted. Um, they could not prohibit the extension of a planned or proposed, uh, basically, if we know a street's gonna go east-west. We expect it to go east-west as long as there's no issues with topography, terrain, critical area, et cetera. Something that just justifies why the street's not gonna go through. Um, so the planned unit development was written uh, in advance of 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 us bringing this to council. We're certainly trying to. Align all of the policies together well before they get to council. That's why you may notice a reoccurring theme with that quarter-mile buffer. That was in the lot size averaging provision that was approved by council about a month ago. For increased of right, uh, lots, uh, lot size reductions, a quarter mile within a public land use. It's a part of this provision, so if you do exceed the block length or the block perimeter. And you have a cul-de-sac that's justified and you're within a quarter mile of a public land use, that's where staff. Uh, based on the code, recommendation would require a pathway be put in place so that. While we understand that uh, that vehicle travel may be difficult because of the uh. Uh, wh- whatever the circumstances are to justify the exceedance of the regulation, that still shouldn't stop. Or deter from non-motorized uh, users having access as well.
All right, I think. I I'm not sure, um, Mr. Gonzalez, that fully answers my question from a standpoint of, um, when you look at a tight grid-like pattern for street connectivity. Um, I understand how that benefits um, travelers. But I'm trying to understand how exactly that interacts with, um, say, a a larger scale development that's intended to have a kind of more unique characteristics of of. Of how it's set up in in terms of, um, you know, street patterns and 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 walkways and such. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm trying to imagine how, um, you know, a grid-like pattern fits into the idea of some more creative, um. Um, neighborhood designs.
Okay, I, yeah, I understand. My my apologies for that. I, this, this probably would, uh, make it, um. Some of these meandering streets, at least those that don't connect to another street. Um. Uh, it make those a little bit more difficult to justify in the in development review process. However, referring back to Title twenty-one, uh, the purpose of it, it, well, we certainly don't wanna limit the flexibility or the design. Or the, uh, you know, how unique a particular development is, whether it's a planned unit development or something that comes through the normal plating process. We don't want to. Allow increased flexibility at the risk of not providing access to the general population here in the city of Pasco. And and I would actually refer back to the fire department on on something like that. They still have a um, a, right, a requirement to serve uh, residents here in the city of Pasco with emergency services. So certainly, it it probably would, um, but I I think when we refer back to the purpose of Title twenty-one, I think we're justified in that.
Mike, I might add, in in terms of the grid pattern, um. I I think we have to remember that the grid pattern does not mean the streets have to be absolutely, um, east-west, north-south or straight. Um, winding, a little bit of winding, a little bit of traffic calming. Um, does not have the same impact on response times that we do when we have to go thousands and thousands of feet. Um, off of Burden or Santafer, uh, to get around. You can see the house on fire or the the home that's having a heart attack. From Burden, but you can't get there without winding through, wind going down the street, turning north and coming back in and turning west again. And then coming around through there. That's, that's what's really impacting our travel times in those areas. Um, so I just, just throw that in.
I thank you, Chief. I appreciate that additional um, comment and thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for helping me understand a little better. I may have follow-up questions, but um, I'm not sure I've got them fully formed right now. So, um, I appreciate this is a workshop item and not a decision-making right now item. Um, so I guess my, I guess. I guess my comments on this are are that, you know, we've heard lots of comments about, about how difficult it is to walk to some of the new schools. And how we have these large stretches of unconnected road. I know that along Court Street, um. Um, wi- with, as we're traveling kind of, you know, west of three ninety-five, there's some areas there where we have walls up. On, say, the north side of Court Street, that just makes it feel like you're going through a tunnel. There isn't any connectivity. There's no way to get to those, um, those. You know, relatively new housing developments from Court Street without having to go, you know, very roundabout. There's, there's some. There's some things that just, just are a real struggle, I think, especially when I think about school kids trying to get to their schools or trying to get to a park, trying to get to. Some of those basic amenities. So I certainly see how this can help, help with some of those complaints we've heard there. And then the other one that really resonated with me was how impactful this is on the ability to navigate in, say, the Road sixty-eight corridor. Um, and I certainly, I know when I, when I lived over there off of Burden, I I struggled. I mean, it was hard to get anywhere, walking or driving. And so I really struggled with the, with just, just how hard it was to just navigate from my house. To any place that I wanted to go. I have to hit Burden basically no matter what, or I had to hit Santafer. And either one of those is becoming busier and busier and even at the time, it was, it was, it was tough at times. So I understand how this can, especially now that I live on, you know, this side of town, um. I don't have that problem. I take four different, four different uh, um, traffic routes, four different intersections to get places I wanna go, cause I, I can. It's convenient, it's easy. I can, if I'm worried about rush hour traffic and I wanna take a right, not a left, it's easy for me to go and be able to do that. It's easy for me to walk to the store, to walk to, to just to, to walk anywhere in my neighborhood, even just take walks around the streets. It's convenient and fun to be able to take different paths, cross different houses and such. So this does seem to stru- structurally fit a number of these things. Um, but at the cost of what looks like a pretty substantial inc- uh, decrease in density and increase in in housing costs. Which is, of course, as you mentioned earlier, a real struggle right now. So I'm, I am deeply concerned about what the uh. Um, Home Builders Association had provided in terms of, um, expecting a ten to twenty percent increase in housing prices is a. That's a, that's a big old punch to the stomach for me. And so, um, I guess I would, I would be interested in understanding, um, more directly some of the comments we've seen. Um, does staff, can staff refute that or is that, is that real? I I didn't see a, a good uh, response to some of those specific questions and comments and. Um, and I'd like to understand that better before I'm willing to to vote on this item. Um, I I I really want to understand how this is gonna impact our already tight housing market and already um, high levels of costs. So if, um, I don't wanna put you on the spot right now to be able to respond to, you know, a letter that we just received, uh. Um, a couple hours ago, but I I would very much wanna respond to that before I'm willing to uh, to vote in favor of this.
Yeah, and I can try to touch on that briefly. Um, I I would trust the the estimates from from the professionals. Um, the same way I trust the uh, the comments and support we receive from the transportation planning experts and engineers uh, throughout the country. Um, this will uh, decrease the amount of developable lots on a particular property. However, um, the very next item, we, that's our intent to address that. As Pasco, along with many other cities, most communities across the country. Have got significant restrictive zoning policies that limit exactly what you can build in terms of unit type and the amount to them in a particular area. What I will say is that in our research, whether it was from the Environmental Protecting Agency, um. The National Association of Home Builders, the State Association of Realtors. Uh, we did not come across a uh, research paper or a policy brief or a policy recommendation. That had indicated that increased mobility. Uh, was a, uh, was a, uh, a negative, um, impact on housing affordability. In fact, the twenty sixteen, uh, White House, White House Toolkit on Affordable Housing across the country, it indicated that. A part of affordable housing is actually making the total household cost more affordable. And we know that the primary cost is what it takes to actually rent or own a home. And the second highest figure is what we spend on transportation and that's often overlooked. And also want to mention something that City Engineer Dan Ford had had, um, expressed in the March presentation was that. Uh, members of the community are racing, they're already facing the cost. Um, whether it's the quality or ease of travel or the safety or lack of safety in particular areas. Or every year throughout the transportation plan, uh, transportation improvement planning process where. Uh, we are using city funds through taxpayers to, uh, yeah, construct projects that maybe should have been thought. Uh, earlier in the development review process. Uh, whether that's Wrigley or that's a pathway along Burns or a pathway along Road ninety, because no other access exists. Um, so there's already a cost uh, being paid. I I I would not point the finger at mobility or street connectivity as the root cause of affordable housing crisis. I would look at a lack of supply based on uh, restrictive zoning policies.
Appreciate those comments. I'll be interested in having further dialogue before, again, before I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and thank you so much for waiting so patiently. Councilmember Alvarado, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Pretimrahas. Um, and I I certainly, uh, thank, thank the, um. My my fellow council members, there's some, some great points that I I was thinking about in my periphery as well, so I appre- appreciate those concerns. Um, I think uh, the, the, of those, uh, the main one for me was, is the idea of safety, so I think that that's. Uh, I I know that in my district, uh, uh, we have a. Kind of a, a mixture of of these kind of developments and some, some new, some old. Uh, but I know that in some of the grid uh, development that those intersections and the speed and and, you know, the safety, I'm thinking of, um. Uh, close to the booth building, there's a few intersections there that, uh, a lot of folks are concerned, concerns about just because of the. Lack of la- uh, um, street lights and things like that. So I I trust that the city will be looking at. Um, s- appropriate street lights and appropriate, uh, uh, you know, how, how, how many vehicles are going through a specific street to warrant those. And so, uh, I certainly don't, don't necessarily feel like those will not be addressed, but I I I certainly wanna encourage. Uh, that to be a, a pretty strong thought, uh, when, when we are, um, you know, straightening out the the grid, I guess. In future developments is, what, what's appropriate to warrant, um, um, crosswalk interventions? And to warrant, um, street lights and to to warrant crosswalks and things of that nature that. Uh, would increase the safety of folks that are, you know, out and about, walking the great streets that we're building for them. And so that would be my, uh, one of my biggest concerns, I think, dovetails a little bit into what Mr. Maloney was saying. Um, I mean, I think, uh, you know, I I would think living in a, one, one of these cul-de-sacs and having a uh. Bus stop maybe a few yards away, but have to walk a mile around a cul-de-sac to get to it. Bus stop maybe a few yards away, but have to walk a mile around a cul-de-sac to get to it defeats the purpose of having a. Um a bus stop near nearby, uh and so I certainly understand the that the con- connectivity. Uh constraints that uh the the pattern of development that we love for. Of the last twenty thirty years, uh the many people just uh felt like that was the the kind of uh. I guess development that was ideal, uh but I think it also has a lot of limitations and that and it also. Uh restricts a lot of uh our ability to enjoy our neighborhoods, and so I'm I'm cer- I'm certainly supportive of of this uh. That definitely uh with uh some additional thing uh co- concerns being addressed, um. I think the last thing I guess I would wanna um comment on is just the um. Uh in my in my neighborhood, I'm 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 appreciative of being able to have Helena. Open up my neighborhood to the rest of the neighborhood and it feels like. My neighborhood was kind of its own little bubble for a while, for better or worse, I I think some people may benefited from that greatly, cause they felt maybe a greater sense of safety. Uh but at the same time, we're disconnected from the rest of the city and to have Helena now connect to uh. The next neighborhood over and then the next neighborhood over because uh uh where the mod uh homes are going now, that that created a next another. Connection, I I think that this is ex- exactly what we're talking about and um, you know, as someone who walks my neighborhood and walks around, I I'm really looking forward. To being able to access, you know, the rest of, it's it's opening up a world to me, I said, I guess, that I would have to driven to. To be able to enjoy, uh and vice versa, we have a beautiful park in Tera Vida that. And now uh our neighbors are able to come and enjoy and be part of our community garden, be part of our park, come walk around and 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 that, and so. I'm I'm very much in support of this and I can see the benefits of this, obviously, there's gonna be some concerns about um. You know, having people in my neighborhood that I don't know, and I think that's something that our uh um, you know, our our community is gonna have to learn how to be good neighbors. And so the uh I don't know if I have a question in that, uh then those are those are my comments, uh uh and if any any of that I'd like to respond to, you can, but no need, if you don't.
Thank you, Councilmember uh Alvarado, and go ahead.
I thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh Mr. Gonzalez, I really appreciate your detailed answers and I also appreciate my fellow council members asking such detailed questions. I did have a kind of a follow up question on the Jeffrey Losley uh Losi email. How often do you guys actually work with the Home Builders Association, I mean, obviously, I know these people as well. Is this common that there would only be two meetings, or is it like a COVID thing, I mean, how often? Do you guys realistically meet with something when you're talking about? The future of Pasco and then obviously we do need these different developers if we're gonna continue our tax base and, you know, obviously the. Viability of Pasco, can you kind of maybe walk this through just a little bit as far as how you came up with just the two meetings?
Yeah, it they were at the request of the Home Builders Association, the Tri-Cities, after the uh public hearings had taken place. Um I wanna reiterate that the public hearings are meant for these particular comments, uh concerns. Uh whatever it may be to be expressed, because the planning commission is there then to direct staff about how to proceed forward. Um this started in December of twenty nineteen, and it wasn't until uh. July or August of twenty twenty before we had an official uh comment uh in opposition to the particular proposal. Um we would have loved to have that before, we're happy to have it, because we're actually to make some minor refinements and clarifications in the proposal before you tonight. In particular, derivative view and the intersection distances based on the ASHTO guidance. Um those uh tho- those meetings we had, I I think were beneficial for both us and uh from the staff side and also from the homeowner's side. Hopefully to see uh what the um what we were trying to accomplish, and when staff proposes a code amendment. Um sometimes it's it's addressing something that's already happened, it's too late, so let's fix it before it happens again. And in this particular case, and I think what's really special about this proposal. Is that we actually have an opportunity to learn from our stakes while we actually have land to develop, and I think that's expressed. Um in the uh Washington State Department of Transportation letters of support. Um I I think we would have loved to see a little bit more collaboration, because it's never gonna hurt, it's always gonna be to the benefit of the community. And it's a learning experience as well for both parties, however, the recommendations um we received from the uh the Home Builders Association, the Tri-Cities. And staff's uh viewpoint did not align with the council goals and policies that are also developed in a public process. Or the comprehensive plan goals and policies, which again are also developed in a public process. And so when we start with the goals and policies provided to us by council. Uh we base our recommendations starting with that, and then we try not to deviate too far from best practices or else we are deviating from best practices. Um I I think it's a, I don't wanna say it's unfortunate, but we understand the concerns, uh again, we're not naive and we we certainly. Know that this will cause some uh changes to the development patterns here in the city of Pasco, and then we believe for the good. And a lot of the recommendations we heard were eliminate, there's no need for it, or do what the other jurisdictions around us do and and. I I think what's troubling about that is is number one, I don't work for the other jurisdictions, I work for this body here. And I base uh my policy recommendations through our office and through the planning commission based on the goals and policies provided to us by council. And so that's why I think there was a little bit more disconnect, I I can say that I have a regional planning background, so. While I would fully love to work in a region that had these same standards across jurisdictions, I understand the difficulty in doing that. Um these proposal, this policy recommendation is based on what we believe best addresses the needs of the community. Uh based on input, goals and policies.
Well, thank you for that answer, I I do appreciate where you're coming from, I do appreciate where. A lot of the developers I know lately, uh I mean, like even nails have gone up thirty percent, I mean, it seems like everything is just getting, either it's almost impossible to come by. Or lumber's gone through the roof and I just know that obviously people don't wanna be hit extra hard. And then not be able to sell their homes, I mean, I realize there's a shortage, but you can only, on a house, you can only move it up so much until people can't afford it, so. But I do understand where you're coming from, I do understand, you know, what as a council, our goals and trying to align everything, so I do appreciate where. Your answers and I guess we'll uh see how all this comes out, so thank you.
Thank you for that, uh Councilmember uh Melon, um so no more questions or comments, we'll move forward with item C.
If I could.
I'll respond to Dave. I'll let Dave speak and then maybe I'll respond to what he has to say.
So I, yeah, I just wanted to to make an observation about the discussion tonight and and uh. You know, this kind of policymaking is somewhat iterative, you know, I mean, ideally, the best time for anyone to have participated. In providing input to the councils when you were putting your policies together and your goals and. That could have been a consideration then, and it still can be, uh we can we can amend our policies. And what uh with the planning department, uh senior planner and and the planning or CED director. And others have done is act on what your policies are and present. A to you uh a policy alternative after, I think, eight public meetings and public hearings and. As well as two special meetings with the home builders, I don't know that we met with any other special interest group.
Uh the Tri-City Association Realtors, we met with them in November.
Yeah, and I actually had some back and forth with the Realtors Association, just on an email standpoint as well, so. You know, there's been outreach, special outreach to those two uh communities, and I think we all recognize they're the ones building the homes. And so to get input from them like this uh before we adopt a policy is a good thing. And I I you know, I I would just say that, you know, it it doesn't always work perfectly, you know, it doesn't always work that. People recognize the opportunities when they should comment, but in this case, we did get comments before we. We got too far along and it's an iter- iterative thing, you know, we may, we may uh, or the I shouldn't say we, but the council may listen to. Uh you know, additional information, evaluate what you've got, and you have you have a pretty full packet. As well as what the Home Builders Association sent you, I have not seen that, so. I did just send a quick email to Mr. Losi and ask him if he'd send staff a copy and if what do you think to do it, that would be appreciative. But uh you know, we'll evaluate those comments and uh as well as the input we've received tonight. And then come back and talk a little bit more to council, I think we anticipated a a couple, at least two or three different workshops here, we weren't planning on bringing this to the council next week. So understanding that this was a pretty big issue and knowing that we had, you know, like I say, the the folks that are building the houses and selling the houses. Uh have have expressed concerns, so I I know there's there's that too, so. Along with the, you know, the specifics of of what we might uh. Ultimately come back with a recommendation to you on or what you may direct us on, we'll probably have some recommendations on. Changing your policies as well, if if those policies don't reflect where we're gonna go. So I just, I wanted to just share those thoughts with you.
Thank you, uh Dave, Councilmember uh Serrano, you still have comments?
Sure, I I just, I appreciate that, because that was kind of the line of thinking that I had, is I think I still have other questions and comments floating that. You know, I mean, it's already eight twenty, um you know, I don't wanna take the whole night, um you know. And this is outside of what we're seeing from the Home Builders Association, my own kind of eyesight that kind of caught things, um. So I think what's fair to staff is, I'll do my best to compile a list of my comments and get it to you for in preparation of the next meeting. Um I do appreciate Dave that, you know, we're not gonna try to adopt this next week, that was gonna be my plea is, you know, similar to Councilman Maloney's. Let's let's not talk about this again next week and uh and adopt it, because at that point, I know I would not be comfortable adopting it as is with questions outstanding, so. I appreciate staff and Mr. Gonzalez's time and effort, I appreciate those who have in provided input, you know, all throughout the community. Um so I look forward to continually working this, I think there's a lot of opportunity. To reach the right type of growth and I think there's a lot of opportunities, opportunities as we consider what we want to do within the city. Of how we might be able to tweak this to allow for different growth in different different areas, like the mixed residential commercial might be a shorter block and. Residential might be a longer block, you know, I mean, the thoughts that are just jumping out of my head and I guess the one last thing I'd like to say is. We recognize that there are some significant issues south on Burns, you know, past word one hundred due to Franklin County's planning issues. Um I don't know how we address that through this, quite frankly, we probably can't. Um you know, but a- as Chief Gears mentioned, these dead end streets that hit someone's, you wanna put a fire hydrant in their bathroom, basically, right? If you were to draw a straight line, um I don't know if there's any way to get into that. Um and again, obviously, we have no jurisdiction over county land, but uh where we might be able to find ways to be creative. Um and and use this as foreshadowing or or a way to structure things with them, I don't, I don't know. Just spitballing, more thoughts, I'll send an email later, thank you.
Thank you, that, oh, Councilwoman, um.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak, uh Mayor Protem. I appreciate my council members fleshing out this conversation and I really appreciate the presentation, this is a lot of. Uh dense information, um as somebody who's lived in Pasco the majority of my life in multiple areas across Pasco. Um the Riverview area over by the airport, um off of Twentieth and Court, um now in northwest corner of Pasco. And experienced different walkability, mobility, transportation, um I would say that. You know, it it has been a constant refrain that I've heard throughout the course of my residence in Pasco that. Having that mobility regardless of age, stage of life, income is one of the. Most important priorities I've heard from people of Pasco, and so while I can appreciate. Um the Home Builders Association, I think that I see um. My priority as serving the residents who live and work and play and go to school. Um having their access and their mobility put forward, and so I'm. I'm glad that you're presenting this and I think, you know, the the example that was given of the one thousand three hundred and twenty foot blocks. Um I can give you a example of a resident last year who emailed me, um and she lives. Off of Sandifer between seventy six and eighty four, and that's. I mean, twenty blocks, right, uh approximately, um and there's not a crosswalk. From eighty four where you get to Maya Angelou to where the new um fire station is at, so for her to get. Across to the commercial side, she has to go, you know, she has to go quite a bit aways. And come back around before that crosswalk was uh was put in over there, um where the where seventy six is at, and so. Emailed me and told me about that and I felt, um you know, a lot of compassion for her because. That sidewalk, as somebody who's ridden it and walked it uh with the old trees, i- it's a mobility, it's an access issue. And so thinking about the people who have, um you know, go every day to the store or to the library. Or to a school, that to me is the the first priority is to our residents. So I understand that it's gonna come at a cost and it's not gonna be perfect, but um I hope that our council keeps that in their sights.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, any other comments? Well, it's definitely a lively conversation and something that we'll revisit here soon. Um with that, we will move on to item C. Uh ordinance amendment, PMC amendment, lots without public street frontage.
Uh good evening again, uh Mayor Protem Barajas and members of council, uh this is, well, it's a much shorter uh presentation for sure. Um lots without public frontage was originally adopted uh back in July twenty nineteen, and if you remember at the time, it was staff's intent. Uh to try to allow more infill development to occur, particularly in areas that were developed. Um with uh with with plating practices that maybe weren't aligned with the uh street connections or utility challenges, topography. Or uh inconsistent lot dimensions, really uh short frontages with extensive uh lengths to them. And so uh staff was requested at the time of that adoption to come back about a year or so after. And provide counsel with an update, uh that's our intent here tonight, and also to recommend a few minor changes. To the provision to again align with our our goals, but also back to our design and construction standards and that were adopted by council as well. And so with that, uh we've got uh four four primary changes, and that is that the pavement width increased to twenty foot minimum. Uh that was uh the result uh after discussions with the Pasco Fire Department. Uh the prior or the existing code has a variable distance, I think, as as minimal as uh fourteen feet, up to twenty feet. Um however, the uh well, the size of the fire truck simply allow that fourteen foot minimum is a little too constrained. And although there are no parking signs that are required, we understand that 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 might occur here and there, so rather than deal with that as a problem in the future. Uh staff is recommending that we just increase it to a safe distance, uh we've removed RS twenty zoning as an option. Uh the intent of this wasn't necessarily to uh increase infill septic syst- systems by by any means. It was to allow for more infill and density to occur, uh so we are removing RS twenty as an option. We haven't seen it used in RS twenty, we've had two proposals and haven't seen it used in that district either. We've also uh really simplified and clarified uh the ordinance itself as well to refer directly to the city of Pasco design and construction standards. Uh the existing ordinance talks about utility placements, fire hydrant, street lights, uh stormwater runoff, et cetera. Those are all uh identified clearly in that uh set of documents, and rather than duplicate it everywhere in our code. Uh it's best to just refer to them since that document already exists, and also probably one of the more um. Uh impactful changes is it clarifies the application requirements, right now, there's a general. Uh nod to what is required when an applicant would like to justify the use of a public street, or I'm sorry, a private access street. For their particular uh application, but there's not a lot of clarity around it either of of how to actually demonstrate that, so the proposal that we're uh. Recommended to council this evening actually clearly lays that out. So this is what that actually looks like, on the left you see uh Cedar Avenue, I believe that's the Habitat for Humanity um uh development that's taking place on Cedar Avenue. You've actually got, I think, twenty or twenty-two foot wide um. Uh shared frontage, so that's a private access, but it allows for development to occur behind uh where it normally wouldn't have. And on that uh uh image on the right, that's Wells Sylvester and Fifty-Sixth Street, and I think in this particular development, they were able to achieve two or three additional units. Where they would not have been allowed under the existing regulations, so you can see the cul-de-sac, um and then with the uh three. Uh short uh accessways that allow for multiple units to be placed behind them, again, I think this one was a twenty foot minimum as well. So fortunately, we haven't run into the issue of the fourteen foot minimum, um and we're able to catch that before it becomes a problem in the future. I wanted to share this, cause I thought it was exciting, we usually don't get a lot of um. Uh newspaper articles that reference infill regulations, but in this particular case we did. And this is from the executive director, the Tri-County Partners Habitat for Humanity Organization, they had said that that little code. Inni- insignificant to a lot of people, was remarkably impactful for them, it allowed them obviously for their habitat project to pencil out. So I thought it would be exciting to share that with council this evening, so uh that that's pretty much it for this presentation, a really short. Um uh obviously, presentation, but. So, uh, that, that's pretty much it for this presentation, a really short, um, uh, obviously presentation, but I think with um, enough, uh, refinements to the code that was adopted in twenty nineteen, that kind of fully, uh, completes it today. So happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you again, uh, any questions or comments from council? Looks like we don't have any comments, so we'll move forward with, uh, item C. Proposed PMC amendment duplex, triplex and courtyard apartments.
Uh, good evening again, uh, Mayor Protem Barahas and members of the council, um, this is a bill that, or, I'm sorry, a proposal that originates from the House of nineteen twenty-three legislation back in twenty nineteen. Um, staff was authorized in the fall that year to pursue three actions or code amendments to address increasing residential building capacity in the City of Pasco, we received a, uh, notice of a grant funding award from the Washington State Department of Commerce back in November of twenty nineteen as well. And the three action items that staff had intended to pursue based on council's authorization, that is action one, that's tonight's item. There is action two, the lot size averaging, which was completed last month. And accessory, I'm sorry, action three, which is the accessory dwelling units, which is in progress through the Planning Commission process, um, actually going to them, um, in two weeks. So this particular provision is to authorize at least one duplex, triplex or courtyard apartment in, uh, resi- in, in residential zoning districts that currently are only, uh, permitting single-family detached dwellings. Unless the city can demonstrate a constraint such as a utility or transportation, uh, constraint that makes those, uh, provisions, uh, unfeasible or unsafe. And primarily impacts Title twenty-one, the subdivision regulations and Title twenty-five specifically, that's our zoning and development standards. Uh, again, uh, referring back to policy references, uh, back to the council goals, the comprehensive plan, the Tri-Cities Consolidated Plan, which for years has put out a set of strategies to increase affordable housing access in the Tri-Cities, they actually have priority strategies in that plan. Uh, the Franklin Countywide Planning Policies and obviously the Washington State Growth Management Act, which we're required to provide our fair share of affordable housing uh, for the twenty-year growth period. I thought I would start with, with this graph, which is, we know that we are growing, uh, we are expected to house, uh, over fifteen thousand additional residents by the year twenty thirty-eight. And, uh, so staff conducted a, uh, a basically another land capacity analysis to look at vacant lots, uh, not only in the city limits, but also in the expanded urban growth area to identify if we can actually meet that target with today's zoning standards. And the answer was no, we fell short, now, the comprehensive planning urban growth area process that, uh, went through, uh, last fall, we had stated that we could, but we also took a look at increasing the uh, densities in medium and high-density land uses only, so we left low density alone. And by slightly, uh, changing or increasing the densities expected in medium and high, we were able to achieve that growth target. Um, with this particular amendment, we also took a look at the vacant low-density lots based on the existing uh, development pr- uh, patterns and ranges, and also added these particular amendments and we're able to achieve a slightly higher, uh, accommodation through the next twenty-year growth period. Uh, but basically summing it up, under today's zoning standards, we will not, uh, comply with that particular, uh, regulation. So when developing kind of a housing action, um, plan or a needs assessment, these are four, uh, questions that the Department of Commerce provides as guidance, and these actually will be further refined as we develop our own housing needs assessment here at the City of Pasco this summer. But that is what is Pasco's current housing supply, their characteristics, or the housing needs of residents today and in the future? What are the current policies that encourage or exclude housing? And can we meet our growth target? And the answer to the fourth one right now is, it's, it's not likely. So when we look at the current housing supply, it's pretty, uh, uh, general information here, but, uh, majority of our, uh, of our, uh, ho- our households are owner occupied. Um, uh, the average household size are slightly higher renter occupied units. That bottom graph can show you how the growth has occurred in the city by decades since nineteen sixty. Two thousand to twenty-ten was a pretty, uh, pretty busy decade for us here. And on the right chart, we see the distribution of actual housing units, occupied housing units in the City of Pasco overwhelmingly, uh, one unit, so the single-family detached home, uh, very little of everything else. So what are the housing needs here in the City of Pasco? Uh, we've, we've had a median household income that's been growing over the decades. Uh, however, fifty-one percent of our renters are cost burden, that means that thirty percent of their household income or more is necessary to cover their rent. Seventeen percent of our po- of our residents in Pasco are reliant on supplemental income or benefits. And slightly over fifteen percent are, uh, individuals below the poverty level. And that square red line on the right is the, uh, Zillow Home Value Index for, uh, Pasco since twenty twelve, and you can see a pretty a pretty significant increase in, in housing, uh, prices, sale prices, uh, home values here in the city. Uh, that does likely not, not going to stop with the shortages on lumber, I think, which I think have increased a hundred and ninety-three percent over the last few years and, and also an increasing labor shortage as well. So what are some of our current zoning policies? Well, it turns out eighty-four percent of our residential zoning districts do not allow multifamily units, so that's a duplex, triplex, et cetera. Uh, fourteen percent is, uh, reserved for medium and two percent is high density, so we, we limit the kind of housing that is allowed in Pasco. It's evident in our zoning and in our land use allocations, and although we try to address those in the comprehensive plan future land use map, the zoning standards still apply, and they still limit what can get built and where. So the, the map on the left, the yellow are the, uh, single-family, uh, detached homes, obviously covers most of the residential lands, you see some orange and green which indicate some attached and multifamily units. And on the right, you see the actual, uh, regulations of the, uh, zoning districts of what they allow uh, for this particular amendment, which is the duplex, two units attached, a triplex, three, and a courtyard apartment, which can either be attached or detached units with a, uh, courtyard for those tenants or owners. And, uh, as you can see here, we restrict that for most of our zoning and, uh, our zoned lands here in the City of Pasco. So we performed a, uh, a density gap analysis, and I'll, I'll try to explain this as best I can, the densities were derived from the zoning districts but permitted under each land use because each land use permits a range of densities, whether it's two to five units an acre, twelve to twenty-one or twenty-one and above, et cetera. So on the low-density land use, we do pretty well at meeting the low end of the, uh, low-density, uh, capacity, not so much on the medium and not too well at the high range, meaning five units an acre in that particular land use. And that, that continues for the medium-density land use as well, we, we almost meet the low end uh, of that permitted range of densities, but we don't come close to meeting the medium or high end, and, and that continues for the high density. We don't actually have a max, it's, it's actually by the lot size, but technically with density bonuses, it's kinda hard to calculate the max density of any particular land in that particular land use. So I took a few cities, most of them relative in size of the City of Pasco, also our neighboring jurisdictions, but I threw in a few that I, I wanted to include because we're not too far from being home to a hundred thousand people, and by the year twenty forty-five or twenty fifty, we'll likely be closer to a hundred and fifty thousand people, which is a, you know, a significant increase. So I wanted to throw in some larger cities as well, just to see kind of a breakdown, as it turns out, out of these particular cities, we have the second highest, uh, amount of, uh, dwellers in the single-unit detached units and attached units, however, um, we are tied towards the bottom for duplexes. We are right in the middle for, uh, those three to four units, so that's that missing metal that you may have heard kind of going across the country right now, those are your modest housing opportunities, and then they decrease as we get to the higher-density units with three percent in five to nine units, uh, structures. And, uh, and seven percent in ten to nineteen unit structures. But actually the second highest in, uh, mobile homes, RVs, RVs and boats, which is kind of a surprise to me. So back in the, uh, fall of twenty twenty, uh, staff released, uh, or put out the housing choice, uh, choice survey that was aimed directly at, uh, realtors, home builders, stakeholders in the housing development industry here. Locally, we had about forty-four responses, um, and they had indicated that, uh, fifty-seven percent that, uh, prices are forcing community members to seek housing outside of Pasco, uh, fifty percent for rental prices. And ninety-five percent of those response, uh, responses had indicated that more housing options are necessary in Pasco. On the bottom, you see, uh, duplexes in blue and triplexes and fourplexes in purple. And you can see some strong support for duplexes and also somewhat then strong support for triplexes and fourplexes as well. We took a look at the twenty twenty National Community Survey that we do every two years and the, and the Community Livability Report, and it indicated that, uh, of those responses, about two hundred and six or so that, uh, there was a thirty-six percent favorability rating on the availability of quality affordable housing in Pasco. And, uh, forty-four percent favorability rating on the variety of housing options in Pasco, and some of the, this is really great questions too that I'm glad were asked in that survey is, well, what can we do from a city standpoint to, to increase options? And so on the housing incentives, should the city look at housing su- uh, incentives? Uh, there was, uh, seventy percent, uh, that was somewhat strongly supportive of that. Slightly less, uh, around sixty percent or so, had indicated that they support zoning initiatives to increase supply the by, uh, diversity and density. And the last question was, just let the market decide, and again, some strong and, and support, uh, for that as well. So what are we talking about? These are the kind of units that we're talking about, uh, actually, three of these are in Pasco, the top left, top right and bottom right, those are all in Pasco today. The, uh, bottom left, I believe, is in Spokane, and I believe the middle one is from Kirkland, Washington. So that would be your, your cottage housing or your courtyard apartment, uh, look right there. But many of these units already exist in the city, in fact, a lot of them exist just across the street from here, they're older. But keep in mind that we haven't allowed them to, uh, actually be permitted because of our land use and zoning uh, regulations over the past thirty or so years. So this is sort of your modest housing, and again, it's, it's, it's simply an option that staff is taking a look at here. Our recommendations, uh, and obviously, uh, there's no ordinance attached to tonight's agenda report, staff would like to work not only with our legal team, but obviously, uh, hear the feedback for council because just like the last, uh, recommend, uh, the last item, uh, this is also a pretty significant item as well, and so what staff has originally proposed and what was approved by the Planning Commission was to, uh, allow duplexes with sewer in the RS twenty zoning district. That automatically eliminates most of the RS twenty zoning district that it, that is in place today. Cause a lot of that land, uh, simply just cannot be sewed with the, the development practices that have taken place over the past few decades and the constraints on transportation. We had also, uh, included triplexes on corner lots within a quarter a mile of, again, that public land use facility, park, hospital, et cetera, again with sewer. That's the same for the RS twelve, again, it's automatically, uh, the sewer provision automatically eliminates a lot of the, a lot of that zoning area to begin with. And the RS one district, uh, we would allow, uh, duplexes and triplexes and courtyard apartments on corner lots, again with that quarter-mile buffer. And then in the R one district, uh, staff is proposing that all three would be permitted. And, uh, one of the things that staff was, uh, told to take a look at, not only from the, uh, general best practices, but also from the Washington State Department of Commerce, was to look at the actual development standards as well, because we may allow them, but the development standards and regulations may prohibit them from actually being feasible in the first place. So we made no changes to the RS twenty and RS twelve zoning districts, we left those the same. Um, in the RS one district, we left in the Riverview West Pasco area, and there's a, a map on the next slide showing that same area. We've left the height the same, the lot coverage the same, lot coverage is the amount of a particular lot that's covered by the actual building footprint itself. We left that the same, although we did increase the height to thirty-five feet elsewhere, outside of that particular area to, uh, to make development for these particular units a little bit more practical, and actually, it's kind of a, um, uh, it might be, uh, an oversight, but we actually have lower height limits in the RS one and R one district than we did in RS twenty and RS twelve. And that may have been a historical, uh, precedence, but we're not sure why.
Okay, that's what I was about to ask, is why? That doesn't quite make sense.
Yeah, and, and staff certainly is, is willing to take that back to the, to review table and, and further refine that or try to identify what exactly were the purposes for that particular regulation to be in place. Um, in the R two district, uh, we recommend increasing the height to thirty-five feet, that allows your two and three-story homes. Um, and, uh, we leave the lot coverage the same for the single-family dwelling. But we remove the lot coverage for multifamily and replace it with the language that was actually used in the waterfront development district that came through the, uh, council, uh, uh, late last year, which is to let the parking regulations and setbacks uh, dictate or determine how much of the lot coverage can be used up by a, by a, a dwelling or not. Um, we actually received the, um, letter of support from the Washington State Department of Commerce that pointed that one out specifically, that they found was, was a, a great addition to this potential uh, to this particular recommendation. Um, in the R three district, um, we leave the, uh, height the same for single fam-
You have questions?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, I did have a quick question, is that so that, uh, to, to allow, uh, a developer who may be thinking about underground parking to have that and, and not be prohibited from doing so because of our code?
I- it could be, um, it, it, but it certainly allows, I think, in staff's, staff's viewpoint, a lot more flexibility. Is, is not, let's not put this additional constraint on the land within the particular residential lot. Let's allow you to build your dwelling however you see fit and then do it around the parameters such as parking and setbacks.
Makes sense, thank you.
Can I ask one question too? So the RS twenty, RS twelve maximum building height matches, uh, matches the height of if you were doing higher density, that's the maximum height it could go, but that matches the same height as a single-family residential in the RS twenty, is that correct?
Yes, the height's the same whether it's single-family or multifamily.
Okay. And what's the setback of an RS twenty or an RS twelve?
I'd have to refer to our planner one, Andrew Latory, who's not here, I don't have that information in front of me, but we can get that to council.
Alright, thank you.
Well, Councilmember Roach, generally it's twenty-five feet front height of the building in the rear and then ten feet on each side.
Okay, I just see potential, uh, yeah, resident comments about height restrictions and, and, and setbacks and all of that with a, a higher density next to a residential, a sub- uh, yeah, residential suburban.
Uh, with the R three and R four districts, we made slight increases to the height in the R three for multifamily to forty-five feet to match with in the R four. Uh, we leave a single-family lot coverage the same for both, but again, refer back to the, uh, removing the lot coverage re- uh, maximum and let that be determined by parking and setbacks in both of those districts.
Has Planning Commission considered increasing height, uh, maximum building height in the R three, R four? Um, a, a change in code and that?
That, that didn't come up during the discussion, I think it likely will be, uh, as we go through the housing needs assessment. Part of that scope of work is to actually tell us where else in our regulations uh, could we either change them or ad- uh, adapt more flexible standards to allow for more housing to take place?
Right, so if we're looking to increase that percentage of housing, that's one of the places that we can do it more comfortably than the RS twenty and RS twelves, in my opinion. When is that housing needs inventory or assessment happening?
Uh, the RFP actually is out right now and proposals are due at the end of the month.
Okay, thanks.
Again, referring back to the, uh, this, the Riverview West Pasco area, no changes to hot, I'm sorry, height or lot coverage in this, in this, uh, portion of the city. And again, referring back to the, uh, comprehensive plan goals and policies regarding, uh, maintaining a broad range of residential land use designations, allowing a variety of densities throughout the UGA encourage housing for all economic segments, uh, of the community and increasing housing supply and diversity through appropriate and flexible development standards, so again, staff's, uh, seeking, uh, council feedback. And, uh, would look forward to bringing this back at a later, uh, workshop, we need to further refine, uh, this particular proposal. Thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, um, uh, Mayor Protem Barahas, um, couple, couple questions for you, um, so if we're talking about the, in the Riverview area, you showed about everything, um, south of, you know, one eighty-two. Um, but that includes the new developments along Chapel Hill Boulevard and such, some of which have not finished up. Um, I would imagine that some of those, just like when we're looking, um, east on, on one eighty-two, kind of south of, um, uh, when is you, but, uh, south, south of one eighty-two and kind of west of Twentieth, as you're kind of getting hinted over there, we have, you know, a series of duplexes and such. Um, I, I guess I, I would, if we're gonna keep any sort of difference in the Riverview area, I would consider whether or not a, um, a carve-out needs to be made for along the one eighty-two, um, corridor there. Um, obviously, we have, we have a series of commercial buildings right along there, the, 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 the character of that neighborhood is significantly different than the Donut Hole area that, um, you know, much further south closer to the river, so um, maybe consider painting that with a, with a, with a finer brush than, than we currently have. Again, that's if we keep a difference at all. Um, sorry, I.
While you look for your comment, could I add a comment? Are you okay with that?
It'll break my heart, but I think somehow I'll get over it.
No, you go ahead, go ahead.
No, please. Alright, well, uh, I was joking, but nonetheless, anyways, um, w- I wanted to ask, where are we at in the comp plan approval? Because that's something that is, you know, that's that's a driving document for how any of this stuff is going to work in terms of higher density and. And those shifts that we we very conscientiously and thoroughly uh discussed um over time. Uh, are we still sitting at the county waiting for approval there? Is it still in review process? Um, any update on that?
Yeah, the uh, excuse me, the Franklin County Planning Commission recommended uh that it be forwarded to the uh. Uh, Board of Commissioners at last week's Planning Commission meeting. Uh, but that was on the urban growth area, but our comprehensive plan and urban growth area are are tied pretty, they're tied together. Uh, we need that urban growth area expansion to make the comprehensive plan work. Um, so that's been forwarded to the Board of Commissioners. And uh, June first, I believe, there will be a public meeting. Uh, at the Capo Center, I'm not aware about the time, and I think at tomorrow's Board of County Commissioners meeting. There will be a discussion or a brief presentation on the overall Franklin County Comprehensive Plan, which also includes ours as a part of it. So it's it's still in that process. We had submitted that to the county in, uh, I believe, October twenty-eighth of twenty twenty. Um, but it's a pretty significant document for the the most uh populous city in the county, so certainly understand sort of the the long process here. Um, I I'd also note that staff has uh discussed with the Washington State Department of Commerce on how we can proceed locally at the city level. With our own comprehensive plan, uh noting that the urban growth areas, it's a separate item. And uh, and maybe uh Director Rick White might be able to elaborate on that as well, if there's a little bit more questions on that particular item.
Thank you, Jacob, and 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 Councilmember Maloney, yes, that we are, there are a number of communities in Washington that have been in a similar situation. Kind of waiting and waiting and waiting essentially, and. Uh, we have, uh, with the blessings of the Department of Commerce. Come across a potential fix, at least to our comprehensive plan adoption process. That would uh essentially adopt it uh prior to the County Board of Commissioners uh checking the box, so to speak. And allow um. Um, allow us to move forward, at least in a limited fashion, with uh the handful of land use amendments that are. Uh, uh pending right now, waiting for the comprehensive plan final decision. It won't affect the um viability of the urban growth area, but uh we expect that to be appealed anyway, so. I I I think we're we're doing all we can to uh. Get as much closure on this as as possible, and uh. I think we're actually, and by the way, the the County Planning Commission recommended the council's preferred alternative for the uh urban boundary, alternative number three. As identified in the environmental impact statement. So that was a big win, and hopefully, the June first meeting that I believe is at seven in the evening. Uh, will be followed up with official action by the County Commissioners, maybe two weeks later, roughly mid mid-June.
Great, thank you very much for that update. It's been something I I know has been top of mind as I were talking about density and we're talking about planning is um. We have that one, you know, our our only real structural document, our guiding, our our guideline is is still just. Um, outdated, so appreciate that. Uh, la- last question I have is, um, when I'm looking at the uh the estimated densities and and, you know, acknowledging that we need to. Increase our density to be able to meet our goals, um, you know, in that draft comprehensive plan. How does, how is that affected by that connectivity ordinance discussed earlier tonight? I mean, we're talking about additional streets, certainly we're hearing concerns about increased costs, and part of that is because of increased. Um, you know, decreased uh lots that are available. Um, and of course, these are going to work counter each other, so I'd I'd be interested. And um, no need to speculate on that if you don't have an answer right now, but um, certainly, I'd appreciate a follow-up as part of this whole conversation. How that would affect some our our estimated shortfall?
Hey, I actually do have an answer. Um, uh, it was quite tricky to find out. Um, it's kind of a mystery about the right-of-way uh coverages in the recent developments in the city of Pasco versus the the older. Pre nineteen eighty developments were right-of-way made up thirty percent or so of a particular development. And now we have, um, I think I looked for the lot size averaging. A proposal, we we have range over the past six years of. Uh preliminary plaids, anywhere from eight to nine percent, all the way up to twenty-two or twenty-five percent, so there is a significant decrease. In right-of-way necessary in recent developments versus prior. And when we try to uh balance that in the expansion of the urban growth area, a part of it is accommodating the right-of-way needs. Uh, of the community, and so we we increased it because we know that we had not only the additional considerations for street connectivity. Uh, to implement the comprehensive plan. But we also needed to identify uh recreational parks, open space, schools, fire department, police stations, et cetera. Um, so we had increased the necessary right-of-way or or the the develop, decrease the develop lots. So that we could accommodate not only our projected growth, but also with the required uh municipal services like streets and fire departments. So it was a part of that process.
It's that's already, that's already baked into our assumptions here, so no need to worry about that. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman, uh, Alvarado.
I think uh, Councilmember Zara had, uh, Roach had it before me, so go ahead.
Thank you, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna break Councilmember Maloney's heart and interrupt his his flow of thought there, um. So just to piggyback off of what Councilmember Maloney said, and this is my, this is where I'm having a little bit of just like cognitive, uh. Yeah, uh, issue here is thinking about the Riverview area RS twenties. And as you said before, in the connectivity issue, those flagship sort of lots that they go in, they're essentially a cul-de-sac, right? They they don't connect through, and so if we are going to do a duplex, triplex courtyard apartment in an RS twenty. Because it has access to sewer, but then it becomes a, could become a connectivity issue or access to emergency services issue. Um, because of how long or how short that jog is on the flagship and turnaround. And so, from my perspective. The cognitive dissonance is that in the RS twenty, it doesn't make sense in my head. It makes sense for an RS twenty to have a special permit process. And look at that area versus the other ones where RS twelve is less density. And then obviously, the R one, R two, R three are are, you know, more permissible. Um, and more likely, I mean, as a planning commissioner, the way that that we tried to do it is that when you're closer to arterials, you're. Your zoning, as you are closer to those major arterials and thoroughfares, is to keep a higher density, and so. Generally, if we follow that rule, then our higher densities would have better access to those. Those connectivity streets. So that's just my opinion there. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Alvarado.
Thank you, uh, Ma- Mr. Mayor Protem. Uh, my question has to do with the projections uh that uh we are working under. Um, obviously, uh, 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 we you may not know the answer to this, but you might, you might, and so I I uh or you might have some indication. Uh, and so what we have seen is especially now with the COVID having been been a thing and continuing to be a thing. Uh, at least from my limited understanding is that there's uh an additional set of folks that are now. Moving into uh more rural areas or areas like ours, uh, because of the cost of living. And that has increased the um, uh, the amount of people that would have come, um, because of the work-from-home option. Uh, uh, or some, how a lot of orga- uh organizations have um, c- c- decided to continue that for the foreseeable future. Uh, and so I know of a quite a few people that that's the case, that they recent uh. Move-ins from Seattle or other other places to to a region. And so I'm wondering if that has exacerbated or will will exacerbate those projections and are those projections still valid? Um, uh, because I know a lot of those projections were done prior to COVID, and so I'm just curious if you read anything along those lines or come across anything like that?
Yeah, the, you know, our our projections are static, right? Whether it was the land capacity analysis in twenty eighteen for the UGA or or this brief. Uh, density gap analysis for this particular proposal. It's actually written into the scope of the RFP that we look more at the uh market feasibility. Not only about the folks who live here today, but what can we expect based on real economics? And migration patterns around across the country about what Pasco could expect uh here over the next, you know, twenty or so years. So, yeah, the stat, the projections here, they're static. Um, that we use the the best available information we had based on existing development patterns, uh accommodating. Or incorporating what we expect in Broadmoor, the waterfront development district and the uh additional multifamily units we're seeing popping up as infill in twentieth and A Street, et cetera. Um, but that'll that'll be further refined in in that housing needs assessment plan.
Yeah, thank you. I my worry is that uh we may not be planning adequately, uh, perhaps because of some unforeseen. Um, i- i- you know, infill of uh folks from out of town, but thank you, I I very much, oh. Looking forward to seeing if there's some updates to that projection.
Mister Gonzalez, I know that you and I have talked about middle housing and how it's missing here, and so you know I'm supportive of it. One of the things that I, you know, uh, have just thought of is that. Um, you know, years ago, early two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. When we had the whole annexation of the Donut Hole and had a neighborhood full of people here constantly and on a regular basis and. What, as part of the Planning Commission, one of the, um, you know, one of the things that. I um voted and recommended was that the council retain the nature of the neighborhood. And I think, uh, I'm just coming to that where I think that that. Lends more through the special permit process and a hearing in that way lends more to getting residents. Input on a change versus doing it through a legislative change, whereas I don't know that people. In Pasco have a, who live there, have a clear understanding of what this change is going to mean for them if they live in that area. And so that is something that I hope that, you know, in a go- global pandemic and we can see how much public distrust there is. And vaccinations and wearing masks, that at the local level, we are the closest to the people. And that I would want us to be as transparent as possible, um, and as communicative about. What policies we're changing in Pasco, and so to allow for that time to let people know in that area. That we're making this legislative change, so I I wouldn't wanna force this issue next week. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, uh, excuse me, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, this is Rick White again, um. Councilmember Roach, we we realize that concern and uh certainly are appreciative of that um sentiment. Um, this is a work in progress, there's no ordinance attached. We uh really value council's feedback at this point. Uh, we know that there's some fine-tuning to do. Um, we know about the history of the Riverview area, the annexations that occurred in, I think it was twenty eleven, as you mentioned. Uh, Ms. Roach, and uh twenty fifteen, I think, was the last one, uh, west of Road eighty. Um, so we we are taking that all into account and I I actually talked to a gentleman today. That suggested the special permit process uh be associated with. Um, this particular issue in some manner in the Riverview area. So again, it it is a work in progress, uh, we uh appreciate council's comments and feedback. And uh, we'll look forward to bringing you back something, not next week, of course, but uh in the near future.
Thank you, Mister White, and I I know you remember those barn burner nights with those those group of people, so we were there together.
Well, I I don't remember, and it's a mental block, but uh, that's. Just a bit of a joke.
Thank you, Director White. Any other comments or questions? Looks like we have no more comments or questions. Thank you, uh, Mister Gonzalez for awesome presentation. And we definitely have some some stuff to review.
Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, we move forward to, um. Item E, uh, Resolution Professional Services Agreement Amendment Number Three. With Mary Smith for construction support services for wastewater treatment plant, and we have Director Worley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem Barajas, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Great. Good evening, council members. This item should be fairly quick. Um, I wanted to introduce this item, which is a, an amendment to the contract for. Uh, well, actually, it's a professional services agreement, amendment number three, for construction services for Murray Smith and Associates. And as council may remember from a couple times ago. I brought forward a amendment to another large project, which was the Lewis Street Overpass for a design. Uh, consultant who uh we were amending their contract to add construction phase services to it, and this. Uh, amendment to the contract is very similar to that. Uh, it where we want design fa- or construction phase services for the design consultant. But we wanted to bring this to you in a workshop because you'll notice that the fee associated with this one is very much uh larger than the previous ones we've done before. And so I wanted, uh, I've asked our CIP manager, Maria Sarah, to give a little more detail about this one. To hopefully answer any questions that you might have as we look to possibly bringing this back to you next week. So with that, I will turn it over to Maria and have her describe this particular one compared to the ones we've brought to you in the past.
Thank you for that. Good evening, Mayor Protem, Protem and uh council members. Um, if you allow me, I will explain a little bit what what makes this amendment. From from other ones that we've done for engineer of record services during construction. And in this, we're talking about the um upgrades at a wo- oh, and operating wastewater treatment facility. And as such, this project is a big project with a lot of complexity in the equipment that is being selected. And and the coordination between the op- operations of this wastewater treatment plant that needs to remain. Fully operational and the installation of this new uh or expanded facilities. Um, what we did to scope this work was consider what functions of the engineer of record were still needed during construction. And as such, we identified that answering questions to the contractor referring to the intent for design. For the design intent, I'm so sorry, the design intent. And um reviewing the submittals for shop drawings and also all the equipment specifications as it was. As it's going to be received from the contractor, as well as evaluating any changes. Or as equal to the equipment that was specified. Once the the construction is completed, there's gonna be a startup of the facility, which requires some documentation. That needs to be provided to our oversight agencies, as well as writing procedures for the operations and maintenance of the facility. And this is typically performed by the engineer of record, that the engineer of record is the one that can assess how the facility functions. And how the new improvements need to be maintained so that that functionality and the treatment quality uh continues to be the same. Therefore, we have a, an amendment that is in the seven hundred thousand dollars for this work. This is the, a big project, again, uh, the overall cost of the project is around twenty-seven million dollars. Construction itself, um, with the contractor is gonna be around seventeen or eighteen million dollars. And um, what you're seeing is this scope of work does not overlap at all. With the work that our um construction administration firm um is going to be doing. We have a construction administration firm, which you've seen the PSA a couple of weeks ago, H D R. And they have reviewed this scope of work, as well as Mary Smith has reviewed the work for H D R, and we ensure that we didn't have any gaps. Nor we had any overlap in those functions, and that way we can ensure that we have everything covered. And and we are doing our our improvements in a safe and maintaining operations in our facility. Okay, with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Go ahead, Councilman Maloney.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Protem Barajas. Um, so I have I have a quick question. This has probably been in all of these documents, and I just caught it in this one, so forgive you, forgive me for not. Asking previously, but um, one of the things I noticed when we were looking at the budget is that the, um, you know, this is a time of materials uh contract. Um, which is fine, it makes makes sense in this case. Um, but when we're looking at the the rates, um, they talk about the rates only being good through the end of the year and they're subject to. Um, they talk about the rates only being good through the end of the year and they're subject to change. Can you talk me through the process of how um say into twenty twenty two, um if they were to adjust their rate significantly, what? How do how do we interact with that? Is it a negotiation? Like, how 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 do we handle a, say, um. A significant increase in hourly rate for project managers or or engineers as such?
This is one of those areas that uh can vary between consultants and between projects. So in other words, while the contract uh may have this schedule of charges in it that has an expiration date. Some consultants will choose to stand by those rates through the length of the current project. Others may request that a new schedule of charges be added to the contract as part of another future change or amendment. And so with that, we still are held by the maximum allowed or approved by. The council for this amendment. So if their rates go up, the number of hours that they can spend on this project go down. In order to maintain the same level of effort.
Thank you for that clarification, Mister Worley. Um, I I don't think that fully addresses my question, though. So um typically what I've I've seen in a lot of different contracts is an escalation factor or something, so you're approv- approved set of rates um at the beginning of the contract. And you add some sort of standard escalation, pre-negotiated escalation factor for for subsequent years. This seems to be completely uh um absent that. And so it's it suggests that we're very much at the um, you know, at at the whim, so to speak, of our of our contractors here. Now, I know we've done work with with this company in the past and we have no reason to believe that they're going to, you know, try to try to, you know, make a make make life difficult for us. And I certainly understand that that council ultimately has approval authority over any increases in budget. Um, but I I guess I'm I'm. I'll 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 just raise the comment that for these PSAs, we're looking at a table of wages. I would suggest we try to maybe reduce our. Our future risk on these longer term projects by seeing if we can pre-negotiate an escalation factor or something like that if we, as we see appropriate. Thank you.
We could we do that. Thank you for that comment.
Go ahead, uh Councilman Serrano.
Thank you, and just to piggyback off that, maybe there's value in uh sending an email noting that fact coming from council. Uh, that that we recognize the need to approve this, but we're certainly questionable of having two years of potential increases. Uh, Director Worley, I get that, you know, if they escalate their prices ten percent over the years, they're gonna reduce their hour value, if you will. Um, but I think it is worth at least noting and and asking if they have a proposed fee increase or something they can at least pass along to us. To let them know that we're aware of it and thinking of it. So I think that communication will be prudent. Thank you.
We'll certainly do that.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Looks like we don't have any more questions uh regarding this and. With that, we will uh direct to uh Mister Zabel, Dave.
Thank you, and good evening again, uh mayor and council. So this is to discuss the. Uh, resolution we started talking about a few weeks back. We had a community member bring to council's attention. Uh, an increase in reported hate crimes against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders at the national level and uh. Literally as close as Seattle, there's been uh multiple events there as well. So that communication, as council recall, led to a discussion among council, uh which culminated in uh. Direction to staff to prepare a resolution for council consideration supporting uh the local AAPI, Asian American Pacific Islander community. Uh, and just prior, I'll note, uh just prior and since that meeting, uh several efforts were made to assess the situation in Pasco. And the sentiments of community members, so as I previously reported to council and I just give you a little bit of a the look back. Uh reminder, uh uh number of our uh area resource officers had reached out to AAPI community members. Uh, regarding local conditions, uh and we also did a search of the the da- our database in terms of. Hate crimes reported. Matter of fact, there in in a five year search, couldn't find a hate crime reported, and that's reported. So it's reported as a crime, not not to say some of those things might have might not have happened in the community. But uh what we heard from our community members of the AAPI community. And uh these are folks that are uh merchants or involved with the church or churches or what have you. Uh, the community members generally uh report feeling comfortable with local conditions, however, the national uh. Bias-based violence uh does weigh on the community. And so subsequent to the council meeting, uh in the direction staff received, uh. Couple of efforts took place. Uh, Councilmember Roach had initiated a number of uh community conversations and she shared her findings with staff. While we're in the process of working on a draft resolution. Matter of fact, uh Councilmember Roach shared them in a. In the form almost of a resolution, so it made it kind of easy to to build on that. And then additionally, uh per council direction, uh. Staff discussed the uh the prospect of a council resolution. With uh the Inclusion Diversity and Equity Commission, IDEC, uh for their input. And through which we had a great discussion with them. Through that discussion, IDEC uh certainly expressed support. They were aware of what was happening uh nationally. Uh, with the AAPI community, uh but they also noted, uh these these are folks that this is. Kind of what they do, so they pay attention to what's happening in this regard. Uh, they noticed there that there's been a rise just generally in hate crimes. Uh, which bears out, and we provided some information in the council's packet. Uh, from the FBI, we didn't have twenty twenty information because it's too early for that to be compiled by the FBI, but you have twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen and you can see a steady increase. For the past ten years or so. Uh, so IDEC, with that in mind, had suggested maybe a more inclusive statement. Uh, by city council denouncing all hate and uh. Again, based on race or religion or orientation or immigrant status or culture. Uh, basically against any segment of our community. Uh, and then certainly in acknowledgement of the spike in crimes on the AAPI community. Uh, uh their feeling was that all communities, I think, would be, uh speaking on their behalf. All communities, I think, would be comforted by that kind of a statement and that kind of a commitment by uh by the city council. And so the proposed resolution is a product of that initial community input. Uh, certainly the prior council discussion from a few weeks ago, uh public outreach conducted by staff and and Councilmember Roach. As well as uh IDEX's influence and and observation. So as drafted, the resolution uh. Reaffirm is proposes to reaffirm and expand on council's commitment uh to helping to promote a and perfect Pasco as a welcoming, inclusive. Uh, community through its support of all segments of the community. And, you know, it does reference that, you know, this is not new ground for Pasco. The city council's been working on this in its direction for a few years. Expresses the cas- Pasco council's commitment to initiate specific actions, and those are kind of listed in the resolution. Many of them you're doing or in the process are doing now having to do with land use or policies or. Uh, uh, community cohesion, those type of things, as well as what you have direct control of. In terms of the organization and the values of the organization. And it also encourages um all community members, uh and this is something council can do in a resolution. You know, it's a it's a good place to make those kind of statements, but encourages all. Community members to stand for community cohesion by supporting and celebrating the diversity of Pasco and to stand against bias-based hate. So gives gives you something to stand for and it's something you to to stand again and support one another, so. This is our best effort at trying to pull together all that information. We appreciate bringing uh ear- hearing council's uh. Sense about what the dra- about the draft resolution and yeah whether we've come close to the mark and any suggestions, we can bring that back next week for council actions. Proposal, so.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mister Zabel, any questions? Go ahead, uh Councilman Alvarado.
Thank you, uh Mayor Protem, and um, yeah, I I very much appreciate seeing this. Uh, I think one of the parts that uh is the second to last, uh were asked on the first page. Uh, that talks about the history involving discrimination. Uh, I'm wondering if perhaps that um to me may feel a little bit brushed over. Uh, having um perhaps been a little bit more um immersed in this history recently myself. Uh, I'm wondering if perhaps adding a little bit more more uh context to that, perhaps from a Pasco-specific. Not necessarily saying the specific examples, but I think uh there's some ownership to uh, we we do have a history. Of discrimination in in Pasco, and it's pretty uh clear. Um, but I think that, you know, being able to name that a little bit better. Um, and and more, I I almost taking ownership of some of the some of our history. Uh, I I don't know how that language could convey it, I I think. And I unnecessarily have a suggestion at this point, uh perhaps I exclude something I can work on if needed, but um I I don't I I that might be just something that I. I think might might need a little bit more acknowledgement, a a little bit more um. Just for flushing out a little longer. We don't need a full book, but perhaps just a a something a little more specific.
Perfect. Thank you for that comment. Uh, Councilman Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. Um, so I I really appreciate the hard the hard work it's gone to. It's uh clearly a lot of thought has gone into this and. I I read it and I read it forward and backwards to, you know, make sure I'm I'm I wasn't missing anything and I. I think I think it really does paint a good picture. Um, I I appreciate Mister Alvarado's comments about being a little more explicit about um. Um, what we've what we've been through as a city. I mean, I remember talking to um, I recently talked to uh. Uh Damian Davis, who's the uh executive director over at the Franklin County Historical Museum. And um one of the things that he brought up is that we're one of the few towns in the entire country who have really been through, you know, um so many waves of immigration. Three, really, three waves of immigration um in our history, and so there is. And each one of those was from a marginalized community that um, you know, that has had had impacts from this, so. I certainly appreciate that that additional historical context, um may maybe maybe of some value. I have no suggestive words for that, so just uh. Um, just supported that, maybe maybe fleshing out a little more. But what I really want to call attention to is section five um. And that and what was was really interesting to me is looking at that and reflecting on our conversation when we were setting our council goals. And looking back at our explicit explicitly stated council goals as to how we're gonna en- engage with the IDEC and how we're engaging with the Arts and Culture Commission and. And and such, and how how many of these items here were really reflected in our conversations and and um approved goals. Um, that are, you know, on the hang out our back wall right now, so um I really appreciate that this, that, you know, obviously Pasco's. We've been trying very hard over the last four years to really get ourselves to a good spot, and I think we made a ton of progress and. The fact that we can say with with some confidence that we've worked on a lot of these, that they're not just um new ideas that were in reaction to a. A a concern, but something that we're that we're working on somewhat and that this reaffirms our our. Our plan to keep on moving forward and keep on building on that, on that work we've already done, so. Um, really appreciate again all the hard work that went into this and just want to to call that as being, I think, really, really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. Um, you know, I'm I'm looking at this and I guess my question is, this seems to be in response. To national activities and a commentary on those rather than things that are specific to Pasco. And I guess that's where I struggle with it. Um. I got I got got a handful of comments here, but I I think that's where I'm gonna start is. While we recognize that there there are these issues and historically there have been, um. As Dave mentioned, that we haven't had the reporting of these types of issues, not to say they don't exist here. Um, so so I'm struggling. I'm struggling with this in that general concept of basically commentary on more national issues and and whether or not. That's something we ought to be doing and when and where is the appropriate. Time to do that? I don't know if this is the lone instance. I don't know if this is one of many. So I I think this is kind of a different approach than we've historically taken, so I kind of question that. Um. You know, the title in and of itself, uh kind of calling residents that will stand up, you know, in addition to leaders. Um, to bias-based hate, based hate. I'm not suggesting that that's not the right thing for the residents to do. Um, but you know, well, do we as council speak for all residents? Um, you know, that's that's kind of a question that I've got. And then where the rubber meets the road primarily in section five. I think uh I do have some comments on those bullet points. One is uh the second bullet point, continued emphasis on assuring diversity. I think more than anything, we want to invite diversity. Um, if we get a non-diverse pool of applicants. We have not assured diversity. So we want to potentially invite it and not assure it. Um, because again, we can't, we can't force anyone to apply for our boards and commissions. So I I think that's that's one that we may wanna consider retooling. And then primarily the the last bullet point. You know, strive to partner with, endorse, fund and support organizations and individuals that are committed to supporting diversity, equity and inclusion as a component of their own. Professional cultures. I have a strong concern with claiming that we're going to fund specific organizations through a resolution. Um, I I think I would like our legal team to really look at that and and what whether that. Whether or not that statement might bite us in in the back end. Um, furthermore endorsing um particular organizations. So I so I'm I'm I am concerned with that bullet point, that that may be one of those that we, you know, intend to do well, but end up biting us in the back end. Those are my comments. Um, I I would hope to see those things addressed before we look at passing this. Those are just kind of my comments. Again, I don't wanna open us to legal liability. Um, if we're gonna i- if we're gonna pass this. So those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Serrano, may I respond to your just your last comment? Um, my original rough draft of this resolution. Actually refuted. It didn't say what we would support. It stated what we would not support. So my language that I proposed was that we will not partner, we will not endorse, and we will not fund organizations. That are uh promote discrimination and bias. Um, and so that was. I I I'm seeing this change now here, and I hear what you're saying. My um original proposed. Title for this as a rough draft resolution was that uh is not the title that it has here, but uh hate has no home here. Um, essentially, you know, to do exactly that, which is to refute what we do not espouse as Pasco leaders, as Pasco residents. Um, and to reject that. And so I'm still in favor of that as a as a title. Um. And I don't know, yeah, I don't have any comment about the assuring versus inviting, that's. I think you guys can figure out those semantics. Thank you for that comment. Uh, we appreciate your comments, uh Councilwoman Serrano. Um. This is definitely something that uh. We should look into revising some of these points that were uh brought up by some of the council members. Um. I have no, um, I don't disagree with overall. The the um proclamation or resolution here. Um. When it comes to those key words like assuring, I think this is more, um, my perspective on this is more. Making sure that we not only invite, but that we make sure that we do have a diverse. Representation within these commissions, not, you know, just i- i- it's. I I see it, I interpret it beyond what is written on there. Um, so just again, making sure, I think it, to me, it says. Making sure that we do have diverse representation. Um, and again, on that last one, um. Maybe just tweak it a little bit to where it, you know, going back to how Councilwoman uh Roach had previously written it. We do definitely need to take it by legal, just to make sure we are using the proper wording um and not setting ourselves up. Any other comments, Mister Zabel?
I appreciate the input, yeah, we'll work work through that, uh run this by legal and hopefully have something back to you next month.
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you to staff for their help and um I al- also had conversations with. Uh, city staff who are Asian American and Pacific Islander as part of this. In getting their input into how to make, how to strengthen this language.
Asian American and Pacific Islander as part of this, in getting their input into how to make, how to strengthen this language. How they might feel represented, because I think oftentimes they provide us their professional recommendations, but it's not their personal recommendations. And this is a time and a place where, you know, our connectivity to. The internet and to people across the nation and across the globe, um bridges that gap that it used to exist. And so we have people who are instantaneously impacted by what they hear. Um and what they hear, uh, what they see on the news as far as, uh, race-based, uh, religious-based. Ethnicity-based, uh, hate or violence, and so it was just a. It was a different kind of, um, experience for me to be asking staff how I could. Best represent them as a personal Pasco resident in this resolution. And that, that was different for me, um, but it, it felt good to work with them and I appreciate their input, they did a lot. Because I needed a lot of polishing in this, it was pretty rough.
And thank you for that extra work, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Roach, um. At the beginning of this, uh, Mr. Zabel mentioned that the AROs went out to the businesses owned by the AAPI community. I too, um, and I mentioned it to Mr. Zabel when we first had this topic on our, in front of us, um. I went out to some of the individuals, business owners, small business owners and, um, and asked. About how they feel about what is going on in the situ- in, in, in nationwide, how are they being affected? One of the responses that mostly came back was, oh, we're okay, we're fine. We, we haven't received any attacks here in Pasco, we haven't heard anything, um, towards us. The comment by three of the individuals out of the six that I spoke with. Was that Pasco is different, Pasco is unique, Pasco doesn't compare to Seattle. Um, one family actually said that their, uh, relatives in Seattle sold their business and moved to Pasco. Because it's so unique and they feel safe here. I want that, uh, safety and security. To be, uh, something common with the rest of the AAPI community in the city of Pasco. And if this resolution helps not only the AAPI community, but Hispanics, Latinos. And every other community that is residing, living, or neighbors here in Pasco. Then definitely we do need to make sure they are included, um, but again, um. One, one of the things that, uh, Councilwoman Serrano mentioned was maybe these crimes are not being reported, um. Maybe they don't know where to report them, and so that's something that we should definitely, um, look into, maybe. Create a, a, a way for people to feel safe and comfortable or, or, you know, outreach into. These communities, uh, to, to make sure they are okay to report crimes or discrimination or. Whatever is going on, uh, in, in their particular, uh, situation. So again, if, if this is a way to, um, help. Bring unity within our, our community, definitely we should look into the proper wording. To make it happen and, and, um, expand that safety network within our community. Any other comments? And with that, I believe we do.
Just, sorry, just, back at section five, and this is directed to Mr. Zabel, that first bullet point. Are we hitting on those points currently in our trainings and our recruitments and those sort of things, um? Recognizing that if we're not, you know, I, I think before. I'm supportive of passing this, I, I'd like to know, you know, obviously the cleanup I've mentioned as well as, you know. If we're gonna talk, uh, more significant effort and, and increased greater cost, I'd like to know generally what that is.
Yeah, that, I mean, that has been an effort, uh, a focus the last year plus.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Serrano, sorry. Councilwoman Serrano, and, uh, there are no other comments, and so we will move forward with. Uh, item six, miscellaneous council discussion, anyone have any comments? Go ahead, Councilwoman Serrano.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, it's late, um. No, I did have a question, I'm glad Zach looked at me, cause it, it made me think of a question that I had, I had, um, you know. I was initially scheduled to speak at, uh, or host or whatever my role will be for, um. Memorial Day, and then, um, so I, I'd just like to get an update as to whether that's proceeding or not. And then, um, I think that dovetails into something we need to be acutely aware of, which is Fourth of July is less than two months away, so. You know, to what extent is staff preparing for the events, we've talked about some different ideas, you know, whether we're gonna go virtual, whether we're gonna go. Live, whether we're gonna go. Some combination thereof, you know, if we could just get an update of that, cause I think again, you know, it's. Personally, you know, three weeks away for Memorial Day, I need to plan for that, and then secondarily, in two months away or less, uh. I think our community has a lot of interest in knowing, um, what's going on with Fourth of July, so. If you could, give us a heads up, appreciate that.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Serrano, and for the benefit of the remainder of the city council. Um, I will get an update on Memorial Day, as far as I know, we're still planning, but we are developing contingency plans, whether we're back in phase two. Or continuing on with phase three, that would determine the amount of people that would be allowed at, uh, the, the City View Cemetery. Uh during that event, so make sure to get a full, um, written update to the city council, at least by next week, if not, um, through other means. Fourth of July, uh, grand old Fourth of July, and let me get my notes in front of me here. Our primary focus has been on the fireworks contract, I know that our, uh, our. Partner city over in Kennewick has canceled their fireworks, uh, for Fourth of July. So that's prompted us to look at some of our contingency plans as well, um. We are still moving forward with a fireworks, uh, display out of Geesa Stadium, um, looking at. Phase three or phase two plans, that would also determine, um, where we would launch the fireworks from, as well as where spectators would be. Um, so if we were, you know, if, if Franklin County was reverted back to phase two. Fireworks would shift over to be launched from the, uh, northern fields of the softball complex, south of the Hapo Center. Um, with car drive-up spectators, uh, in the Geesa Stadium lot, as well as the. Uh, southern softball lots, according to my notes here. And we'd be working with Franklin County as far as access to the Hapo Center lots in that area. Um, some of those, uh, some of those plans, if they're separated, vehicles are separated ten feet apart, similar to what we did for the drive-in movie events last summer. Uh, we could accommodate over a thousand vehicles. Um, if we remain in phase three, uh, it would, the fireworks would be launched off of the soccer fields as typical. As you would see after a Dust Devils game or in our normal, uh, Fourth of July area, um. Uh, outlay and, uh, spectators could be in the Geesa Stadium lots. Uh, the north soccer complex area and, uh, the softball complex area as well, and staff is working with the Tri-City Dust Devils to look at. Um, access with their ticketing system or access for stands and, and, and patrons to be within the stadium. Um, Dust Devils did throw the first pitch last week and, um, they're complying with. Uh, the, the special outdoor event, uh, regulations that they have, so, uh, there's just some. Um affiliations with their Major League Baseball club we need to look at as far as facility usage there, so. Um, it is our intention to hold the fireworks display, um, we'll get an update on the other, uh, events for Fourth of July. Uh, most likely, this will require, um, additional work with fire and police as far as access and control. And, um, if we're looking at the enforcement of the parking of, of over a thousand vehicles in a certain manner. Uh, it's gonna require significant lift from staff and volunteer capacity, um, as well, so. Uh, the Recreation Services staff is working diligently to, uh, solve those issues and plan ahead and obtain volunteer work as well. Um, I think one thing that has been determined is it's gonna be decidedly difficult with COVID restrictions to hold the Fourth of July parade. Um, and so working around that, especially if we're gonna continue with the fireworks display, we would need, uh, to. Um, allocate our volunteer staffing and, and capital, um, for that event. Um, in order to make sure that we meet the, the compliance regulations from the state, so. As, as of this meeting, we're intending on holding the fireworks display and, um, forming a plan for phase one or phase three. And, uh, looks like numbers are trending pretty well so far, knock on wood, um, so we'll continue with planning.
Do you think a pre-registration to attend the fireworks might be an option to help, you know, alleviate some of these concerns you've just raised?
Yeah, well, we can't control if people are in the adjacent neighborhoods of parklands, going out into the street and gathering. Um, definitely would have to be through a pre-registration, um, and, and to take it, or else we, we would have. Most likely thousands of vehicles descending upon, uh, the Pasco Sports Complex area, so.
No, I appreciate that, I just offer that because again, we're clicking in less than two months.
Yep.
If we're gonna pre-register something, we ought to get that word out, you know, sooner than later.
Yes.
So again, I, I appreciate that, I just, you know, I've been rolling through the summer calendar and it's here.
Yep, it's, yeah, it's amazing how close it's getting.
Thank you, go ahead, uh, Mr. Zabel.
Thank you, I, I do have a few items, uh, wanted to share, so. Uh, the chief had talked to you previously about, uh, vaccination, uh, mobile sites and pop-up sites and, uh, last week. Uh, we had four, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, uh, Fiesta Foods on Wednesday had seventy. Uh, vac- vaccinations, uh, Volunteer Park, uh, they did a pop-up for the Foodies event, which is the. Kind of the food truck Fridays, since they're not doing that downtown on Fridays right now. Uh, clock twenty-six, the Pasco Farmers Market on Saturday, uh, another seventy-two, and then, uh. CBC West on Sunday thirty-eight, so making some headway there as well as the Mass Facts site, and I think everyone's aware. Our numbers are down a little bit there, and then, uh, Mayor Pro Tem's working on a couple pop-up sites herself, she's.
Yeah.
That's right, um, May sixteenth, Sunday the sixteenth, uh, we will be at Lakeview Mobile Home Park, uh. Tierra Vida is invited, um, so hopefully we get the two hundred. Out there, uh, Second Harvest will be coming by to, um, give, um, food boxes, and then, uh, May twenty-third. Location is tentative, uh, we're working with the Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to get that locked down.
Okay, great, and then, uh, I did wanna note, uh, a couple more things, one, uh, Lewis Street, uh. Overpass groundbreaking, I know we've mentioned it before, just a reminder, June fourth, uh, at eleven thirty AM, so please mark your calendars for that. And then, uh, confirm that, uh, at our, at your, uh, May twenty-fourth workshop, well, we should be ready to talk about the. American Recovery Act Plan dollars, so you, you heard a little bit about that from Director Stigdahl tonight. Uh, we have a hundred and eighty-four pages of regulations to go to between now and then. And should have some idea of what are, what your options are, uh, by that eve, by that time, so, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, and we do have need for executive session. And so it's nine forty-three, fifteen, twenty minutes?
We break through just a couple of minutes.
About twenty minutes.
So we shall return at ten oh three. Sounds good?
Thank you.